Counselor Kazer.
Counselor Anderson.
Likewise.
Counselor Nanki.
Here.
Counselor Leung.
Here.
Counselor Osik.
Here.
Counselor Hoy.
Here.
Counselor Nordike.
Here.
Counselor Lewis.
Here.
And Mayor Bennett.
Here. Okay. Why don't we start with the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're going to do Planning Commission Appointments. And why don't we have each of you, if you don't mind, introduce yourselves and then we'll go into questions.
My name is Stephen Price.
My name is Lisa Heller.
My name is Ann Lovejoy.
Michael Slater.
Okay, very good. Now, do we have a, you all have a question sheet? Okay. Apparently I don't get one. You all have plus, you guys have question sheets back there? If you do, bring me up one, would you, if you have one? I just don't see it here, but maybe I'm just not seeing it. Okay. Well, why don't we begin? And why don't we just start with Counselor Kazer? Would you like to ask a question? And we'll just have each of you answer initially in order and we'll just bump along as we go through questions.
Well, I think I might just do a little softball, just to get people warmed up. Which is, can you just give an overview of kind of your, why you want to be on the Planning Commission?
Sure, I guess I'll start.
Pull the microphone up so you can talk directly to the panel.
First, I can follow instructions quite well. So, I've lived in Salem now for 16 years and I've been a Neighborhood Land Use Chair for the past three years. I think like everyone here, I'm pretty committed to the future of Salem and believe that we live in a great city with a lot of opportunity. But we also have some significant challenges over the next decade or so. We're starting a new comprehensive plan update. I think that will take a considerable amount of work and conversation with the public. We have serious issues around climate change here in Salem. We expect that we're going to have about a 10-degree summer increase over the next 50 years in terms of summer weather and a drop of about 50% in rainfall. That's the latest estimates. That's quite significant for our natural resources as well as our economy. We're obviously growing. We're expected to have 35,000 new individuals in the next, what, 15 years or so? And I believe, just based on my experience here in the city, my experience with policy work and with planning issues, that I can be quite helpful as we work through some of these challenges that we're facing and as well as build on the opportunities that we have in the city.
Thank you. Next. And do, again, say your name again, just so it'll start to...
Certainly, my name is Ann Lovejoy.
Okay, Ann.
I moved to Salem in August, so I don't have the depth of experience of some of the candidates. What I do have is significant experience from across the United States looking at systems, very large systems, to make those systems work better. I was a lean Master Black Belt for healthcare. And I've also worked for large insurance companies, so I have a solid grounding in finance, in system design, things like that. As part of that work, I've also done a lot of team building. So, in respect to the problems that Mr. Slater outlined, I have a significant skill set and experience in figuring out unusual solutions and different ways of innovating that people don't typically have at hand, easily at hand. So, that's the value that I can bring.
Thank you.
I'm Lisa Heller. And when I was a practicing attorney, I noticed over the last probably five years that a lot of my clients, middle-class clients, could not find housing that was in their price range. And I mean, I'm talking about nurses, firemen, teachers. And so, I became concerned about that. They couldn't find adequate rentals. So, then I started following House Bill 2001. And I thought, oh, this is really good. This is going to make a huge difference on rental and housing shortage in Salem. As far as what I've done in the past, I've held hearings as a hearings officer for the Department of Revenue. I was an administrator of the Appeals Division for the Department of Revenue. And I've also done hearings for administrative laws for the state, for several agencies. And I'm just really interested in this. And I think that I work well with others. And I think I can come up with some creative solutions as well.
Great, thank you.
Good evening, my name is Stephen Price. I am a district administrator for a neighboring school district. And I approach this situation or this position from the lens of how we support our children. As a school administrator, I have spent the last part of the last 10 years serving, directly serving, our homeless students, our migrant students, our students who are impacted by special educational needs in other areas. And one of the things that I've noticed is that many times the decisions that the adults make towards families and the adults that are over these children does not necessarily benefit the children. And so, the reason why I decided to get involved, among other things, was to bring that light, kind of shine a light on the children with regard to that. I previously served in CATC, the Citizens Advisory Traffic Commission. And so, this is my next step in getting more involved in Salem and seeing what I can do to help.
Great, thank you. Okay, Counselor Anderson?
I'm going off script since I gave the mayor my list of questions that were supplied by us. One of the things that we have done in our Salem is look at an environmental action plan. And we're moving forward with that right now in terms of getting a CO2 inventory... Thanks, Amy. Getting a CO2 inventory and then using a baseline and moving forward. I would be interested in each of you to give me your view of how the climate change is going to, would affect the Planning Commission and how they are looking at various developments and responses to the situation that's going to be coming in the future. And we're going to start with you, Ms. Lovejoy, because we're going that way.
Okay, just in terms of climate change, there's a lot of activism in this state and there's a lot of division. There's a lot of activism in the state as well as a lot of concern for the different kinds, how the different kinds of solutions would impact individuals, small business, and things like that. So, the kinds of solutions that you come up with, even after you do the inventory, have to be compromised or they have to be very forward-looking. Just generally speaking, a lot of cities have tackled climate change by reducing the number of cars in the city. This particular city, you're very, very dependent on individual cars. The public transportation doesn't seem to be that well-used or it's used for only a certain amount of people. And the other thing that I've noticed is businesses are not consolidated based on how they could help each other to be more efficient and effective by co-location. Things are spread out a lot. And I think that just in terms of planning, you could combine those two in a way that would be helpful.
My turn? You know, thinking about CO2 and climate change, and I agree, I mean, it's, you have to reduce traffic. But one thing that kind of struck me, and I didn't see it in the 2015 plan, was what do we do about self-drivers? Because in my view, the commercial companies are going to be pushing this. So, we're going to have self-driving vehicles. And once that starts, then it's going to be for private use. So, what do we do? Do, I mean, does this make more cars? Now, they may be electric, but you're still going to have to grapple with parking and people coming down and not using public transportation and in preference to having their self-drivers park themselves and then you call to have them come back. So, I have a concern about how we're going to manage that. Because I think it's going to add more congestion rather than less, although it's probably going to be better for the CO2 problem.
Climate change and the CO2 situation is a major concern to most schoolchildren. As I mentioned, I'll be talking a lot about the way students perceive things. And we need, as a city, to develop a system, plans that are going to assure them of a future where they don't have to worry about that anymore. We can engage with community resources and activate the schools and the students themselves in order to achieve some of these goals. Cleaning things up, helping to plant more trees, as well as public campaigns for information. Students often go home and talk to their parents about things. And so, if you want to change the opinions of parents, many times by going through these students, you can help impact changes in attitudes. The parents often listen to their kids better than they listen to other adults. And so, that is another venue we can use to try to achieve change.
Thank you.
So, one of the things I think we need to do is we need to integrate some sort of greenhouse gas CO2...
Michael, could you pull that toward me?
Sure. Is that better? Thank you, all right. Some sort of CO2 greenhouse gas emission into the city's planning goals. And that doesn't exist right now. We talk about energy efficiency. We're not talking about CO2 goals or greenhouse gases. So, as a commissioner, when we look at what are the goals that we need to make our decisions within, that doesn't yet exist for us. So, I think we need some instruction from the council on considering that. I think that's one important thing. Secondly, we're moving in the right direction in a number of areas. I've had a chance to attend a number of the art community or our Salem projects. The 15-minute neighborhood, I think, is going to be critical. We're well-positioned, I think, in Salem to have 15-minute neighborhoods if we can improve our sidewalk and bike infrastructure within the neighborhoods. But simply by making our city more walkable, we're going to be able to achieve some of our greenhouse gas emissions goals. People have already referenced trees. I think you all know I'm very interested in trees. We're seeing some good direction already in the city's street canopy, so I think that we can move, make more improvements on that. And then I think there are probably a whole range of technical things that other cities have looked at that we haven't explored fully. One thing that I think is very interesting is a number of cities are mandating highly reflective roofs on large structures like warehouses and office buildings so that we can reduce the heat island index. I think that would be very easy, kind of low regulatory requirement that we could have in the city as an example. So, those are a few examples. I think, you know, probably there are a range of others. Obviously, we know that CO2 from cars is the main issue here in Salem. And again, we've talked about that through the 15-minute neighborhood and making things more walkable and bikeable for us.
Thank you. Counselor Nanki?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I think we're on Ms. Heller. And I go off script all the time, so... They keep printing out these questions for us and we never use them. But, so, scenario. Something comes before the Planning Commission. It had been before council. Not the exact same issue. But as part of a land use hearing, an agreement was made with the developer at the time, say. And there was a change that we agreed as the city to make to the transportation system plan. Many years later now, another development is adjacent to that. The agreement that came to place 10 years prior was never codified. And so, this is adjacent to that. And these people want the way it used to be before the agreement, but it was never codified. How do you reconcile the differences with an agreement with a party if you don't necessarily agree with that agreement and this new person on the development that's applying for something is in front of you?
Well, you know, it's hard to do on a hypothetical without all the facts. So, you just have, I would assume that you would have to take, since it wasn't codified, I would put them on equal footing. And then I would say, okay, which is the best overall for the use of the land? That's how I would work it.
Okay, thanks.
So, with all due respect to the developers, they will build something and then generally leave. The people who remain, the residents, are the people who are going to be impacted on the long term by whatever changes are decided. Therefore, I would reach out to the residents of the area that are impacted and get their input and their opinion on what they would like to see and then use that to help inform decision-making.
Thank you. Well, I have an idea where this stems from, so I've been practicing this answer. I think in the situation that you've outlined, we have one developer that has made a presentation to the community. And as you said, all the details aren't codified. So, the question is, you know, what do we do with that situation? The second piece of that is that we have a developer that may have invested significant resources in a property based on what they felt was an agreement. And how do we respond to that? I guess I'd take a look at a couple of different things. I mean, clearly, a developer that has made some investments and isn't able to build there requires compensation for that, right? I mean, I think in a situation where we've decided that the public interest, for whatever reason, means that we have to step back from a prior agreement, the developer needs to be compensated. It is important that when people, when the city makes a commitment and people invest in the city, if we can't follow up with that commitment, then we need to compensate the investor on that. I think the second thing is if there is a commitment by the city, we need to be extremely careful about going back on that commitment. That's just an important thing. The land use system requires that developers make upfront investments. We have to be very careful where that we don't create a situation where people are nervous making land use investments in Salem. The particular instance, you know, is whether or not there is some compelling reason that outweighs our general commitment to living up to the agreements that we make in the past. And I think, as someone said, we have to be very careful, but we do have to look at all the facts involved. So, I guess my answer would be, in general, I would be very disinclined to go back or reverse a commitment that we made years previous. But I think if there is a compelling reason, we don't want to, you know, lock ourselves into a situation where we can't respond to new facts or new information.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor...
I think all the answers, yeah, excuse me, I'm going to kind of punt this one. All the answers were very good. The one thing that I would add is we're getting ready to roll out a new strategic plan. And there will be principles within that plan that may require us to adjust how we look at land use. Because we will be going back to core principles. And if we're doing the right thing in order to meet the future, some decisions will have to change.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, starting with Mr. Price. So, and questions for everybody. What is your unique selling point that makes you stand out in comparison to everyone else?
As I mentioned previously, I think my unique perspective is just going to be based on taking into account families and how they're impacted by the changes and the decisions that are made by the Planning Commission. As I mentioned previously, my work for, in my school district, has been with homeless students and homeless families, migrant students, migrant families. Many of the decisions that are made around homelessness and that support homeless families and children leave gaps where people fall through them. And every time that that happens, somebody is ending up someplace where they're not able to live. For example, many homeless students end up what we call couch surfing, where they end up on this person's couch for two weeks until the parents of that, their friends get tired of them and then they kick them out and they end up in a different couch. These kinds of situations are not acceptable. And by and in large, we don't have any kinds of systems in place to protect those children and to support them and their families while they achieve stability. So, I think that the lens that I have working in those situations with those very sensitive populations is my main selling point.
So, I think I have a number of points that I, perspectives that I can bring to the council. You know, I began my career doing fair housing enforcement work. It wasn't a very long period of time, but I'm certainly familiar with fair housing requirements and issues related to the equitable distribution of housing stock and the importance of integrating neighborhoods with the diverse range of people and incomes. Much of my career was spent protecting the voting rights of people of color and historically disenfrantized populations. So, I think I bring a pretty well-trained equity lens to looking at land use issues. I'm from a very established, middle-class neighborhood, the Fay Wright neighborhood. It's one of our older, kind of mid-century neighborhoods here. And I think it's going to be dealing with exactly the kind of issues that Salem is going to be facing as we try and deal with housing density. And someone referenced HB 2001. So, you know, I think I bring the perspective of a homeowner and from my experience working with the neighborhood on, you know, how do we try and increase density at the same time, respect residential neighborhoods and single-family homes? And how can we find strategic and thoughtful ways to expand that density without kind of creating a backlash against us? And then, of course, I try and bring the perspective of our natural resources. And I think it's important that as we grow and increase density, we're also very careful that we protect the natural resources and treat that really as a public health opportunity for us.
As I'd mentioned in my opening statement, I'm used to being a system thinker, which includes all of these things. Because large-scale corporations look at the politics, the environment, the market, how to measure things, what kinds of processes need to be in place to make things work better. And also, as part of my background, working with the healthcare industry, I'm very used to dealing with highly regulated and highly legislatively controlled environments and systems. And what we're looking at here includes all of those things that impact the future of Salem and how Salem works now.
Well, as I said before, I am a lawyer and I have done a lot of administrative law, which is not exactly what we're talking about here, but it's pretty close. I've had to analyze lots of complex situations, lots of cases. I know from my time as a hearings officer, I'm familiar with land disputes. I'm familiar with zoning. And I think I would bring a fresh and different perspective to the commission.
Great, thank you. Counselor Nordike?
Thank you, Mayor. As a member of the Planning Commission, your decisions will impact everyone in our community. But oftentimes, there are marginalized communities who have no idea that developments are going to be impacting them and their families. As Planning Commissioner, what would you do to ensure that there is increased outreach to our marginalized communities?
Una de las cosas más importantes es comunicar con las familias en una idioma que entiendan.
Completamente de acuerdo. ¿Ahora en inglés?
Yeah, absolutely. So, one of the things that's most important is that we are communicating with the families in the languages that they understand. One of the things that I do as a fun side project is I support an organization called the Oregon Association for Comprehensive Education, where we run the largest bilingual conference, well, multilingual conference in the state. And in that process, we provide language support for all languages that come. And I think that that's one of the issues is, you know, I go to the courthouse gym and lately I've been hearing a lot of Ukrainian language there. And I wasn't, I mean, how many people know that there's a large Ukrainian population? There's a lot of different populations that are here. They're all speaking different languages. And so, the very, very first thing is to communicate with them in their language.
I guess that's me next, all right. You know, that's a really good question. I have not thought about what I could do as a Planning Commissioner to address that issue. You know, I think the issue of being more inclusive in city meetings is a comprehensive problem that we have in the city of Salem. We don't particularly do a lot of outreach to the Spanish-language community, to the Pacific Islander community, and to other newer communities here. I know that there's, obviously, we can make things more accessible with multiple languages, but, you know, I have to confess, I'm not too, I don't have a very good answer for that. And I will give that some thought. The one thing that I would say, just on public notification, is that we need to do, we need to distribute our notifications to a wider geographic group. Right now, we're very narrow in terms of the number of people that get information about that. And I think that we can improve that. It's often the case that people a few thousand feet are going to be impacted by a development and they need to have an opportunity to hear that now. But again, this is kind of a systematic problem. Same with the neighborhood associations, which is not a particularly diverse population.
Okay, in terms of doing outreach to different kinds of groups that are not normally involved in public venues or in comments or any of those kinds of administrative things. One of the things that I've done in the past is I've done town halls with military audiences and I've done focus groups. Because the kinds of populations that you're referring to are very, they're high context. High context, there's a lot of relationships involved. They trust people that they talk to face-to-face. And the kinds of outreach that typically happens is, as you had mentioned, paper-based or, you know, it's more formal. But that's not the kind of cultural milieu that we're missing in terms of our communication. So, I would propose that you actually do more outreach, which is facilitated, which looks for people's input and is not just presentations.
Well, I think one of the ways to contact underserved communities is to go to the churches and see what you can do as far as meeting with people, workshops, also contacting people, again, through the children, as you pointed out. I think there are a lot of ways. Now, have I thought it through? No, because the question surprised me. But I think there, if you sit down and really go through it, I think there are a number of ways, different points, to contact people. And then you've got problems with single parents who don't have childcare. So, there are a lot of issues that you've got to kind of blend in and figure out exactly how you're going to manage it.
Thank you very much. I think we've asked our questions. We're, we'll be voting on this in just a few minutes. And really appreciate you applying.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. This February 10th meeting of the Salem City Council, if you'd like to.
Counselor Kazer.
Present.
Counselor Anderson.
Likewise.
Counselor Nanki.
Here.
Counselor Leung.
Here.
Counselor Osik.
Here.
Counselor Hoy.
Here.
Counselor Nordike.
Here.
Counselor Lewis.
Here.
And Mayor Bennett.
Thank you, yes. Okay, let's do the Planning Commission Appointments. You have your ballots. Let's get, yes, sir.
I just have a question for the city attorney. Since I kind of got messed up about three Planning Commission votes ago, are we voting for just one candidate the first time and one candidate the second ballot? Or how should we do this?
I think you could just select two on your ballot.
On the first ballot?
Right.
But we don't differentiate between a first choice and a second choice?
No.
Okay, okay.
So, vote for two.
Vote for two.
Okay, I think I got it now. No write-in?
If we'd had an app, we could have really pulled this off. We're just double-checking. Okay. The council has appointed Lisa Heller and Michael Slater. Okay? And thank you very much. Otherwise, really appreciate you all coming out. Keep your, keep your name in the pool. You never know. One of these folks might not like it once they get on. Okay. Move on then. Everybody set to go? Additions and deletions, counsel?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move revisions to the agenda.
Second. Second by Osik. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Motion passes. Counsel or manager comment?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a few quick comments. The mayor and I attended, and actually Steve Powers was there as well, a celebration of life for Richard Swire. He was an incredible individual who had many years of service here at the city of Salem. He was a big guy with a huge heart. He touched a lot of lives, including mine. And so, it was wonderful to be there and to be present for that. And I very much appreciate Mayor Bennett's comments at that service. A few other things I'd like to make. I have asked for updates and will continue to request updates on our homelessness situation. And I so appreciate all the homeless service providers who've been willing to meet with me so that I can learn more about what it means to be homeless and really what the evidence-based solutions are moving forward. Most recently, I visited Taylor's House and I recommend all my colleagues on council do so if they have not already. Taylor's House is a shelter for homeless youth. Because we are in a country now that has homeless youth. Between the ages of 11 and 18, we have children in shelter, some for days, weeks, or even months. They share bedrooms, chores, and meals. And many of them are fleeing scary, scary circumstances at home. In addition, I am talking with two different groups about affordable housing projects specifically for our homeless veterans. I look forward to working with RJ Navarro and the YMCA in the future on efforts to help shave off the number of homeless living on our streets or couch-surfing, living in cars, living with friends, and so on. I applaud all of the efforts that my colleagues are doing to help understand homelessness. And I can tell you how humbling and helpful it is for me to see all the houses of worship, the small army of volunteers, and all of the homeless providers in town, such as Arches, but many others, who are doing their part. And if you're not already volunteering in some capacity or donating, please consider doing so because the time really is now. Last but not least, I want to thank Lieutenant Upkeys at Salem Police Department Behavioral Health Unit. Part of understanding homelessness is understanding behavioral health and understanding the fact that mental health takes a huge toll on persons without shelter. And I was very impressed with Behavioral Health Unit. They provide a cost-effective alternative to having a police officer take time out of their patrol duties to escort someone down to the ER at Salem Health in many cases. This, to me, demonstrates the need for public safety funding at a time when we have a homelessness crisis. So, those are my updates. Those are some of the things that I've done within the last week or so. And again, I appreciate everyone's willingness to help educate me. I'm not an expert on homelessness, but we're luckily, lucky to have people in the community who are. So, thank you to all of you out there who have taken the time to share your lived experiences, your observations, and your expertise and your data with me. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Hoy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Last Wednesday, the 5th, Counselor Nordahl and I had the opportunity to attend World Read a Loud Day at Grant Community School, which was a really excellent event. I definitely encourage folks to do that if they do it. Next year, Grant Community School, I don't know if you're aware, but that's a community-wide school where students come from all over the city because it's a dual-language school. So, even though it's located in Ward 1, it's really an entire community school. We had a great time reading with second graders last Wednesday.
Anyone else? Mr. Manager.
Thank you. As you'll note on your agenda, there are several reports and staff are here to highlight those information reports for you as council chooses. You also have on your agenda under Special Orders of Business, an issue regarding camping. I would like to share that, and some of this information has been provided to council in the past, but I think it's important to provide it again. And that is, the city is continuing its efforts with our community partners, the Salem Housing Authority, to house the homeless. Hrap 260 have been housed since January. Redwood Crossing on Fisher Road will be opening in May, depending upon weather. The Salem Housing Authority, you might recall, in November received $450,000 in vouchers to house very low-income residents with disabilities who are either currently experiencing homelessness or who are at risk of homelessness. And the city is enforcing ordinances that council has passed. From January 20th to February 3rd, there were 22 downtown exclusions, excuse me, exclusion orders with 12 exclusions and 76 arrests in the downtown. Charges included bench warrants, trespassing, drugs, shoplifting, and assault. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? All righty. Thank you very much. We, there are no proclamations or presentations, so we'll move on to public comment. All those signed up are signed up on 5A, which is the camping. One thing, I want to remind you of a couple of things. One, you have three minutes. The orange light will go on at two minutes. At three minutes, it'll turn red. Stop talking. We've got a lot of people lined up, so I'd like to not have to interrupt you, but I will. So, if you would stop then. The other is, please, no clapping. Let's move on through this. We've, we've heard from a lot of you before. I doubt we'll hear different, different testimony. So, it's a good opportunity, I think, for everyone to move on through. So, Daniel Hoffman, you're up.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, councilmen and women. I appreciate the time. My name's Daniel Hoffman, for the record. I am the founder of the Homeless Citizens Movement, as well as the Sheltered Homeless Advocacy Coalition. I've just presented this document to your office. Mayor, you might not have gotten a chance to look at it.
I did, thank you.
All right. I'm just going to read this for the record, and this is signed by witness and dated. It's a cease and desist, reasonable request for accommodation, notice of action. I, Daniel Hoffman, founder of the Sheltered Homeless Advocacy Coalition and the Homeless Citizens Movement, do hereby declare that all homeless citizens are now and forever, unless submitted in writing by email to D Hoffman, homelessrights@protonmail.com, are full and equal members of Shack, granted all privileges to utilize agents of Shack to file grievances in regards to any civil rights or ADA or disability rights against any public body or body that receives public funds. Also, all homeless citizens are officially added to the HCM roster as homeless rights activists and evoke all protections guaranteed under federal and state free speech laws and any ordinance or applicable amendment. Let the record show that this document was submitted this day, February 10th, 2020, to the city of Salem, Oregon. Furthermore, we are requesting all city, county, and state municipalities cease and desist any violations mentioned herein and based on our disabilities, requesting reasonable accommodations without forfeiting our rights in any way. I do state for the record that any homeless citizen that receives any kind of injunction, whether it be a ticket of defense or a jail defense, in regards to their camping, their possessions, or anything else, that I will personally file a grievance, whether it be a grievance on ADA disability law federally, or if that entails invoking an anti-slapp statute. Because we are all, all homeless citizens now considered activists. Thank you.
Thank you. Judy Birch. There you are, Judy.
Hi, my name is Judy Birch. I work downtown Salem. The homeless, as you know, has become a real problem down there. The malls losing business every day because of it. We're all losing money because we're all losing hours down there. We really need to do something. I believe that they were better off down at the Arches instead of down at the mall and Rite Aid because they were out of sight of the mall. We just really have a problem. They come into our business, they're doing their thing in our fitting rooms down there. And I just, you know, there's land around, like BML land over in eastern Oregon and stuff. Couldn't we just give them, like, tools and things to build their own communities out there? Give them something to work for instead of being down on the streets of Salem? Because my customers come in, the few that we do have walking through the door right now, have told me they are fearful of being downtown Salem. They're scared to death. I had a young lady at Safeways and Kaiser one night tell me that she used to work down there. She will no longer come downtown Salem. She has a young boy, doesn't want to exposing to all that. One of my supervisors, when I got to work the other day, told me that her husband saw a lady exposing herself downtown doing her stuff. Something needs to be done. Why can't we just bust them, like, to property outside the city limits? Give them stuff to build their own place to kind of live and something to give them to do besides be downtown. I am fearful of going to work every day. I have had homeless come up to me and wanting money and have threatened me. I called 911. I was told they were just being rude and until they actually did something to me physically, that they would not come out. My husband called the mayor up and 911 called my husband up, wanting to know what time the incident took place and what time I had called in. Because I, I wanted to go home. I didn't want to go to work that day. There's got to be something that we can do because we're all going to be homeless if we don't do something with the homeless downtown. And my suggestion is that we open up some land to them, like I said, and give them tools and seeds and they can even grow their own stuff out there. Would make sense, right? Pioneers did it back in the pioneer day. And it would get them off our city streets. The mall security has told me they can't do anything about it because it's public sidewalk. They've been told by the city of Salem.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Pamela Lyons Nelson.
Pamela Lyons Nelson, Ward 1. I've brought with me, oh, I don't even know what ward you're in.
Jim, this is Ward, Ward 8.
Ward 8. Cindy Francis, Ward 8. And this speaks to exactly what our prior speaker was talking about, the perception of danger and interference with business. I've been talking, first of all, to some people who are prominent in Portland, and they say our problem, that the same problem is in Portland. But the people in Portland don't blame the homeless and the ramped-up fear of the homeless for their business having troubles because they, they do say that the majority of what's happening is because people are shopping online. They don't go out. They order their groceries, even if it's from Fred Meyer's, which is, none of the Fred Meyer's are especially dangerous. So, there's a shift, a cultural shift in how we conduct our business. And it doesn't really include downtown to the extent that it used to. It's fun being downtown. I bring my grandchildren downtown. And now Cindy has something to say. Cindy is actually one of the people that does room service downtown early in the morning, waking people up in a humane, friendly, welcoming fashion. And this is what she has to say.
My husband and I are down there two mornings a week. We've never been threatened. We've never felt unsafe. I'm not saying anybody else has not had that experience, but I think if you bring fear with you, you attract fear. We have friends, another couple about our age, who go down there twice a week also. And they bring their two grandsons with them, five and seven. They are not afraid of exposing them to seeing homeless people. They want to teach them to have compassion and to have heart for those who are less fortunate than the rest of us. Thank you.
And I'd just like to say that we're talking about two different things. We're talking about trying to find long-range solutions. But are we willing to let people die in some, in some real senses while we completely put off dealing with how much money it is going to take and whether we, as citizens of this city, are willing to pony up more money for the thing we know we eventually are going to have to do anyway, which is provide low-income housing? There's a gap between when we get that done and right now, the suffering that's happening. There are about six weeks left of winter. And we need to recognize we're dealing with relief now and also development that will hopefully get better by next fall. Thank you.
Thank you, Pamela. Dan Roslin.
Hi, I'm Dan Roslin from Ward 2. I've lived in Salem for over 33 years. And I used to be proud of Salem and I hope to be proud of it again at some point. The homeless scene out in front of Rite Aid is just the most visible manifestation of the city's ill-conceived ban, ban on tent camping. But to residents and visitors alike, it represents a black eye that the city has inflicted on itself, not to mention a cruel situation for our unsheltered citizens. The staff report for this meeting implies that homeless folks come downtown to be near services. Yet, when they were allowed to be in tents out in places like Wallace Marine Park and Cascade Gateway Park, the scene at Rite Aid didn't exist. And of course, it didn't, it really exists when they were at Arches. Rite Aid, Rite Aid's overhang is what gives them protection that their tents used to give them from the rain. I've heard the terms "service and shelter resistant," referring to our unsheltered citizens. And I think there are a number of misconceptions around why these folks are sleeping outside and not inside someplace. Our principal emergency shelters, Union Gospel Mission, Salvation Army, Samanka, are all high-barrier emergency shelters. So, if you have addictions, if you have mental illness, if you do not want to be separated from a significant other or a beloved pet, you're out of luck. you're out of luck. You're not allowed to be in those places. And the few low-barrier emergency shelters, Safe Sleep and Church at the Park, are so small that they're always full. I've just seen the proposed areas where camping might be allowed. And I haven't had time to reflect as to the workability of the selected areas. There are so many factors to consider. But I urge you, I urge you to work together to come up with something that makes sense, both for Salem's unsheltered as well as its sheltered citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Linell Wilcox.
Hi, I'm Linell from Caris Ward. And I was gonna talk about repealing the camping ban, at least in some areas, for the same reasons that everyone else is talking about that. As everyone's saying, having no way to shelter yourself is going to have people seek warnings. We have laws about animals needing to have, have some shelter just from the elements. And we're doing less than that for people. And time is running out. And I'm very grateful for all the things that are happening. And some of them are just coming around the corner and coming soon. But for right now, we have hardly any time for people to be able to live through this winter. So if there was a way to have a camping ban repeal or limited places where people could camp so they could have some basic shelter that we require for animals, I feel like that's the least we can do. And it doesn't cost anything to do that. But I also wanted to just talk about some of the things that you guys have been asking. You've asked some really good questions, and I've done some research. I met with Salvation Army this last week, and I toured their facility. And there's a lot of myths going out there that there's beds and nobody's using them. So when I talked to Salvation Army, they shared that they have about 84 beds. They're using about 43. And the reason that they're not higher is not because people aren't coming in. It's because their funding is low, their staffing isn't adequate. And even if they had adequate staffing and funding, they would only go to about 64 to 65 beds because they've learned that if you have too many people in one space, the PTSD, the trauma, the anxiety goes through the roof. And you could fill your beds, but your dynamics are going to be too hard to manage. So they've shared that they would only go to 60-something beds. And they're at about 43 right now. Samanka House has a similar problem where they have a waitlist usually. And then they also have emergency beds that they often don't put out because they don't have the staffing to do it. So again, the people who are saying people are service-resistant, not going into places when there are beds, there's other things going on. And I'm probably out of time. Police have shared that the risk of person-to-person crime against a stranger is really low. And I wish we would do more education about that so that we can do some, some perception changes based on some facts that exist. And then again, I, I go out and I blow bubbles with people. I have a friend who plays percussion instruments. And sometimes what you, how you present yourself is going to be a reflection of how people react to you. If you're coming at it with all fear, you might attract people who are going to sense that.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Excuse me. Yeah.
Linell, thanks. I have just one question. I know you as someone who goes downtown and spends time with the homeless that are on the sidewalks. If the city of Salem were to identify a specific location and set up camping in that location, would you be willing to go and help service that location?
I would certainly visit. I am currently working at Safe Sleep, working every night graveyard shift. So I'm a little spread thin, but I would, I would absolutely visit. And I would do what I could in the time that I could.
Good. Thank you. Dave McCarron? McCarron, there you are, Dave.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman, my name is Dave McCarron. I'm with Church at the Park. We've currently been in duration warming since the 1st of January. And our facility is 52 years old, wearing down, parts are breaking off of it. I mean, and it's a trial. We have people in various states of inebriation, drug use. We've got property theft. We've got issues that we deal with daily. And it's taxing on our staff and our volunteers as well. But it can be done. I mean, these folks that are unhoused are going through a difficult time. There are challenges to be met. They've been trying to get resources that they need to survive daily. I mean, just for them to find a place to sleep because of the camping ban is a challenge, because they know they risk being fined or ticketed. In the interim, because we became a duration warming center, I'm seeing the majority of our regular folks that visit our center displaced. All of the people that are coming out to Church at the Park have been folks from the core area that have been displaced because of the camping ban. So now my people that regularly frequent the church are sleeping in tents and outside of the building. So I've had a really tough time dealing with that. I've got a vested interest in these people. I've been working with them for more than three years now. And now I have to start working relationships with new people that I have trust issues with. They don't trust me. I have to get to know them and start from scratch. And it's not easy work. What I've seen since I started coming to these council meetings before Christmas is that we've been kicking this can down the road for months. And we've chosen to just keep kicking it and kicking it and studying it and studying it. And we haven't done a thing to actually put something forward that's gonna remedy this situation. I think it's time that Salem, as a city as a whole, come together and do something and lead the charge. I'm watching the city of Eugene, the city of Portland, and other cities throughout the country take active steps towards trying to relieve homelessness and the issues that they face. And we're doing nothing but falling farther and farther behind. So I put it forward to the council to approach the state and other agencies to try and remedy this situation any way possible. Funding, be that as it may, may be a challenge. I understand that. But we need to do something, and we need to lead the charge and not be the people at the tail end of this discussion while other cities are stepping forward to do something and we're not. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mike Johnson.
Hello, my name is Mike Johnson, and I'm homeless. And I work at the Church of the Park as a volunteer. And since this duration warming's come on, we've been getting overloaded. I mean, after the people leave, we spend about two hours every morning cleaning up all their garbage, blankets, and that. And the garbage people have been really nice to us by doing extra dumpings for us because we have so much garbage. And we're getting overloaded. I mean, people are getting at their wits' ends what to do. And we have so many cars parked out there and everything. We need help. And we're not getting it. That's all I have to say, sorry.
Thank you very much, Kathleen Thorpe. Oh, Tom, just a sec, I'm sorry.
Mr. Johnson, I have a question. Thank you for you and Dave McCarron and all the work you're doing out there. I, I guess you say you need help. And Mr. McCarron says we should do something. Do you have any suggestions as to what kind of help you need or what we should do?
Housing.
I'm asking, I'm asking, Mr. Johnson, if you want to talk, you can come up and talk, ma'am.
Church of the Park, what we basically need is like, people are parking on the grass and stuff. We need some more chips and that because of the mud and everything. We need more volunteers to help us. And we need more resources. We have Arches helping in that and stuff, but they're only there part-time. After they leave, we have to clean up everything and that. So I don't know what to do about it. I mean, I have my van and that, and I help people in that as much as I can. Some people don't want help, they just want to be there and that.
Thank you.
Kathleen Thorpe.
I want to thank the council and the city and the mayor and everyone here for all the work that you have been putting in, trying to come up with some answers and the huge investments that you've made in assisting in helping the homeless folks in the downtown area and throughout the community. I, I did have an experience earlier today downtown, of course, with a shopkeeper. And they did express a lot of the things that Judy expressed, concern about their own personal safety and then the appearances of what's going on around the Rite Aid area. And we did talk, and they're compassionate folks. And their concern is for our homeless people along with the rest of the concerns about continuing to be able to do their business. I would like to encourage some form of camping for the folks for the next few months until we can come up with better long-term solutions, simply because being able to get out of the weather is really important to their health and their well-being. I'd also like to ask, or really ask, if there's been a consideration of doing a volunteer coordination, all the, all the individuals in the community that want to supply food or supply clothing or blankets, and they're not really sure how to go about doing that. There were some experiences that were both nice and not so nice, of people driving up with carloads of stuff and, and trying to shove them out the door, thinking that these things might be helpful to, to folks. And instead, it created a huge trash problem. And then there was a whole lot of money spent by the city and Arches cleaning all that sort of thing up. And I would think it would be a great way to connect people that provide food or provide tents or provide blankets or sleeping bags. So that's my question.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Becky Beeman.
Okay, see if I can make this work. I think this is me. At least it looks like me. Nope. How do I close it? There I am. Okay, is this me? Nope. So where's mine, guys? I sent it in. Is this?
Presentation for council.
Presentation. Nope. Okay, I sent it in and asked that it be loaded. And it's in the Internet Explorer. It won't be on Explorer. That? No. Mine's, it's got a black background.
Is it one of these?
Okay, why don't we, why don't we let you have a few minutes to hunt that down? And the next person is Lindsay Bigelow. And you can come over to this, this one over here while these guys try to find the...
Thank you. My name is Lindsay Bigelow. I'm a resident of South Salem. And I also help run a small nonprofit in town. We provide meals, clothing, basic necessities directly to the unsheltered in our community. I'm not here tonight in hopes of solving the homeless crisis of Salem. I'm here to advocate for the folks in our community who are currently living on the streets. Regardless of circumstances, I believe that all of our community members should be afforded dignity. And as it turns out, just because you don't have a roof over your head, you still have to urinate and defecate. There aren't options for folks after certain hours of the day to utilize bathrooms. I mean, there's just no access to that. I know that there's an expense to it, but I'm asking for toilets to be provided in the downtown area that can be accessible 24 hours a day. I feel like that would go a long way in making the area more sanitary for everybody. When you don't have options, you use what you have. And right now, that's the sidewalk in the street downtown. I'm also asking, as others have, for a partial repeal on the camping ban. It's led to so many of our unsheltered community members to become displaced. Although we can't change the past, we can remedy where we're at and moving forward. And I know that the city is working towards long-term solutions. So if we can help along the way, even if it's just small changes, I'd love to see that. And yes, if there was a lift of the camping ban and people did move elsewhere, we would certainly be reaching out and providing meals and other services wherever they are. Thank you.
Thank you. Did we get that resolved? Okay. Dana Buckdaveen.
Good evening. Dana Buckdaveen, Ward 1, 401 Center Street Northeast. I manage Salem Center. Appreciate all the efforts that the council and the city of Salem have done going forward and in the past, and the successful programs that we've seen so far with respect to housing for folks. I offer no solutions. I just have an appeal. We still have a retail crisis, if you will. I have 20,000 square feet of leasing spaces at our risk. One of the many points that the retailers are bringing up are the homeless, the folks who are residents on the sidewalks around the shopping center and across the shopping center over by the Rite Aid. I am here to ask if you consider, again, lifting some portion of the camping ban and enacting a sitlight ordinance to ensure that those folks who don't want to move have to move. I'd like to be able to continue contributing to the economic well-being of Salem, but we continue to hear from retailers and customers alike, as well as my national folks, that there's a challenge here to be able to do business in Salem. Thank you.
Thank you, Dana. Okay. Larry? Boy. Naffet?
Nassett.
Nassett, okay.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, I have essential tremor.
No, no problem.
That's what happens.
Sorry about not being able to read it.
I don't have anything more to say than has already been said. But anyhow, I want to thank you, Mr. Mayor, and city councilors for both your service to the community and for this opportunity to address you. This council and the city government are trying to come up with solutions to the problems experienced by and caused by the unhoused homeless people living on the streets of Salem. Please, please, continue and intensify those efforts. This needs to be done. However, until you have something better to offer, give people back their tents and shelters. Of course, there will be problems. But the current situation is far worse than that alternative. It gives Salem and its government a black eye and an undeserved reputation for incompetence and inhumanity. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, Tom.
Thank you for coming down, Mr. Nassett, and for all the work you've done in the past. I don't know if you saw this, but in the agenda item that came to the councilors, there was a series of maps that showed what would happen if, what areas would be open for camping if a ban was imposed only in downtown residential neighborhoods and parks. Have you had a chance to look at that map?
I have not.
Okay, well, I'll tell you, sir, that they show a whole lot of areas that might be affected all around the cities where potentially there could be camping. And to my looking at the map, these are a lot of areas where we haven't had camping before when there was no ban at all. Excuse me. So I'm just wondering if you have any response to the argument that banning camping in parks and downtown and residential areas... camping in parks and downtown and residential areas will end up with people clustered around those areas camping in those spaces?
Quite possibly, and that will be a problem for the people living in the areas. However, to leave people with no shelter at all is worse.
Thank you. Mark? Are you ready? Okay, sorry.
Okay, we'll see if this works. Bingo. Okay, where's the? There, that one? There we go. Becky Beeman, Word 7.
Good work.
I could have sworn that we asked for the same information at two meetings in a row, and the information that I see coming in at this point appears to be all or nothing. Instead of looking at a small area and then having layers that you could add if you make it bigger than that, this is, boom, everything's open. So what I'm presenting here is, I focused on the IG, general industrial zones, and I've got pictures of where there was a chunk of land. This is West Salem, it's pretty small, this is a chunk behind Goodwill. It's real close to residential, I don't think it's a good shot for camping. However, this is Turner Road. This is outside I-5 largely. Turner Road is the swirly line that goes down there, it's inside Kubler. There's a lot of land out here, it's cushioned by agricultural, could be used for camping. This is McGill Crest. McGill Crest is horizontal in the middle of this, Mission is at the top, Madrona comes down at the bottom. There's a lot of space here. Front Street is very small, I think, and I went by and took pictures. You could get one camp of like 10 to 15 tents. More than that, and you're overloading the area. Fairgrounds, ew. Because it's so visible, I would say one camp, and it's small. Parkway, huge amount of land out here, and the south end is to the right, the north end is, the south end is to the left, the north end is to the right. And the reason I wanted to give you the north end is you can see there's a couple schools there. It's on the other side of the Parkway, but you can see it. There was a very nice little community in this area, it was off of Main Line Drive, it was a homeless camp. The people had jobs. If you lived there, you lived by the rules. You participated on the sanitation committee, you participated on the security committee, and when people came to the camp, they were challenged by the security committee. "Are you looking for a place to live? Fine, here's the rules. If you want to live by the rules, you can stay here. Otherwise, you can take a hike." This community was busted up when we passed the camping ban. People came in and whacked on their tents and told them they had to move on. We destroyed their community. This was a self-governing community. If there are unhoused people in the city of Salem, they need at least the opportunity for community in a homeless camp, if we can't do better for them. Perfect is the enemy of good. It's been 57 nights that we've had those people sleeping outside without shelter. I think we need to do something. It doesn't require that we go through repealing the ban. I think we can belay law enforcement in the areas that we decide to allow camping. I think you need smaller camps than you have in your heads, 10 to 30. Make sure they're buffered by free space and require that the residents keep the camp tidy. You don't have to just make it a free-for-all. You can say you can camp here if. I believe we need to suck it up and admit that even homeless people poop. This is a poop bucket. It's one of the two that I have at my house for peeing and pooping.
Thank you. Mark Lavis?
Go ahead, come on up, I'll get out of the way.
Mark? That was not Mark, okay. I'm sorry? Jan Hendren? Oh, Jean, I'm sorry. Jean Hendren.
Yes, am I able to give some of my time to my niece?
I'm sorry?
Am I able to give some of my time to my niece? No, okay. Well, I just wanted you to know that I went down to Eugene yesterday, she gave me a tour of the tent camp down there in Eugene. And of course, I saw some pros and cons. They've actually put quite a bit of money in that, it's not individual tents. They have purchased military-grade tents that house 14 and more people at a time. One of the things that I saw down there, one of the things that's coming up that I thought might be really beneficial for any kind of a tent camp that you agree to allow here, is that they're bringing in garbage cans with locks, so that people can use those for storage units, as opposed to the cubbies that require somebody to monitor people going in and out of there all day. Probably by next week, I will be heading down to Texas to look at some of their homeless camps, in particular, the Tent City near Austin, where they are self-governing. I have relatives down there and frequent flyer miles. I'm completely broke because of the money I've been spending on the homeless people whom I've come to love even more than I did when I saw their tragedy. I simply love them out of compassion now that I know them. I care about them as individuals and friends, two of whom at least are still in the hospital. So I am here for you. I am ready to invest myself in any way you choose to move forward with this, but we've got to stop killing people, and they are people. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thanks, Jean. Jean, does your niece want to come up and testify on her own? Do you want to come on up?
She, her name's on the list.
Your name's on the list?
Yeah, as is her son's.
She, she, I'm sorry, I should have added, she is the one who manages, one of the people who manages that homeless camp, or the tent camp down there, and also works at the service center, which is just maybe about a block down the street. Absolutely amazing place, they have a dog kennel, everybody is lovely, sweet, welcoming. It's great. And yeah, if you have questions, she's the person to ask. And she came 79 miles to be here with her kids.
Okay, Angela Barto? Ah, okay.
Hi, my name's Angie, and I currently live and work in Eugene. I am not here as a representative of my job, I'm here as myself being a currently, currently I'm housed, but I've been unhoused for most of my life, as a child, as an adult, with my own children. I was actually unhoused both times I was pregnant with them, and had I not had the services provided in Eugene, I would still be unhoused. I prefer the term unhoused because we are not homeless. We all belong to this earth, this earth is our home. I find homeless as a very derogatory term. That being said, I do want to talk about the services that we do provide in Eugene. I know you guys are all talking about providing housing, we need housing, we need housing. Alternatively, you need storage. You need storage for people to store their belongings, because you want them to get a job, right? How do you get a job if you don't have somewhere to put your stuff during the day to go apply for that job? How do you have a job if you don't have someone to put your things to go work that job? How do you have a job if you don't have somewhere safe to sleep at night? Because recently, I have had a lot of sleepless nights, I'm working sometimes 40, 48-hour shifts, not going home to be with my children because the need is there to be with these people. I work with unhoused people currently. I, most of my time being unhoused, I was employed. I was a full-time student, I was employed, I was raising my child, I was involved in a protest in Eugene to get the services that we have now. It took a lot of work. We, I do understand that, you know, seeing unhoused people on the street is, nobody really wants to see that. However, we need to, we need to see that. My children need to see that. They need to see that people are not being treated fairly, people are not being treated as humans. These people are human beings, and we are all responsible for each other, we're all responsible for each other's survival. I take my children to these camps. My son has spoken at city council meetings, my son has spoken in the news, has gone out and helped these people. I use my money I earn at work to buy blankets, to provide for these people. But really, I think the biggest thing is, you tell people, "Go out and get a job." They can't get a job if they have nowhere to store their stuff. They can't get a job if they can't sleep at night. A lot of mental illness is due to the lack of sleep. I myself had the same issue. Due to being unhoused, my mental illness kicked in really bad, and I was agoraphobic for approximately four years. Now I'm out every day, busting my ass, excuse my language. I work very hard for my money, and I do not discount the people out there who just don't have it, they don't have it in them because they're not being supported. We can't treat people like animals and trash and expect them to be any less than animals and trash.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to just finish up the public comment then. Brent DeHart. This is, things not on the agenda, it's fine. I want to get these done.
Thank you, Mayor, Councilor. Now for something completely different. I will tell you that I'm so happy I'm not sitting in your seats with very, very difficult decisions to make. I'm here. My name is Brent DeHart, I do business in Ward 2, I'm with Salem Aviation Fueling. I am the Chair of Fly Salem Community Group, listening to return commercial air service to the city of Salem. I'm only here to give you a quick update. It's been a while since we've been here, and I wanted to give you an update of the progress. And first of all, thank you for allowing us to apply for grants. We were successful in achieving a grant from the Oregon Department of Aviation for half million dollars. And we are the only Oregon community to have received one, and we're using it to help pay for our recruitment efforts and also for the marketing of the new service once we are successful. So we want to thank you for that. In addition, John Pascal, the airport manager, has applied for a federal grant with the U.S. Department of Transportation, which is also used in this recruitment process, or one of 53 cities across the nation, got our hat in the ring for those. And we should hear by the end of the month whether or not we were successful in getting that federal grant. The progress since we saw you last, which is about 15 months ago, we have been busy. Obviously, the grant applications, developing a strategic plan to recruit, I've been to two national conferences, spoken to airlines, America, United, Alaska, Big Sky, Southwest, SkyWest, and a number of smaller regional areas, airlines. Our target, however, has always been a stated major carrier to a major hub. To connect Salem, one stop to over 100 cities is kind of the goal. We have done education throughout the community, and outreach, and gathering support, and raising some money. One of the biggest tools we need is a revenue guarantee, which I don't have time to explain, but our goal is a million dollars of private sector money to be raised as part of the recruitment process. And we are two-thirds of the way there, I'm happy to know, we have like $660,000 pledged. And I'm happy to report that I think that we've got some airlines convinced, and our biggest obstacle right now is the 737 MAX, something that's beyond our control. The MAX is on the ground, those routes are being backfilled by smaller aircraft, and the smaller aircraft that would serve our market are not available. So whereas I thought possibly in 2020, we'd have SkyWest flying on behalf of United to San Francisco or Denver, they have no capacity because they're busy backfilling demand need, and they basically didn't have a plane and a crew to do it. But we're hard at work and have a lot of progress, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Yes, Councilmember.
Thanks, Brett, for coming down. I'm sure you're watching this, but do you have an update on the 737 issue and when they may be flying again?
The FAA is saying in spring, but United has said they don't anticipate using theirs until summer at least. And we're really hoping that it's by the summer.
But that's summer of this year?
This year, yep.
Okay.
Any other, any other questions? All righty, thanks.
Thank you, appreciate it. Always happy to answer any questions you have in the future.
I can't do it. Anthony Stevens? Okay. Boy, I really, I think this could be Margaret, I really can't read this one. Sanson? Sanso? Sound familiar to anybody? Okay. I really apologize, this is just, I just cannot read it. Malag- Malagi?
Malachi.
Malachi, thank you, Malachi.
Hi, I'm Malachi Barto, I'm 12, and I live in Eugene with my mom. Honestly, I don't know what I'm doing here whatsoever.
Welcome.
I would like to talk about how, um, I would like to talk about how, when I was a kid, I was homeless for a long time. And honestly, it was, it was really hard. There was a lot of help, but there wasn't always enough. Like, it was helping a lot, but there was definitely a lot of room to improve. I don't know much about what you guys have over here, but from what I've been hearing, there's really not much, and I think there should be more. That's really it.
Well, thank you very much. Okay, and Jason Greenwood?
I don't know what that was. Thank you for letting me talk. Thanks, councilmembers. Most of you received an email from me this morning detailing what I'm talking about right now. But as it happens, I also want to add that I, we're a small business in Salem, and we currently employ two homeless people. And in addition to that, if, we're having, we're having some permitting issues with the city of Salem, and I'm looking at ways, ways of streamlining this, not for us, but just in general. We want, we want to make sure that small business in Salem is able to produce and produce jobs for the city of Salem. And if you guys would look at the email that I sent you, it basically details the problems that we're having with permitting and the problems that we've had with red tape in the city of Salem, and we would like to do everything we can as a small business to streamline this, mostly because we want to make money, obviously, but also because we want to help the community that we live in. And the city is where we live, it's where we want to be, it's where we want to grow. And we just want to stop all these different kinds of roadblocks that are out there. I don't have all that much to say other than that, but that was the reason I came down, and it happens that homelessness is actually really important to us, because we have actually looked for housing for our employees. We've gone out, we've gone to camping parks, we've looked for places, and we can't find anything at a reasonable price. We can't find anything that's out there. And we'd like to be able to house them, we currently house them in our own house, and we'd like to not have that. Not because we don't like them, but because they really need their own spot. And we'd like to work with the council, we'd like to work with the city to get that changed. And part of that is just getting us our permits to get into our building. Thank you.
Okay, yes, go ahead.
Can you tell us again the name of your business?
Divine Distillers.
Okay, and what do you do at Divine Distillers?
We are Salem's only distillery. We make alcohol.
Okay. So my question is, can you summarize what are the issues that you have been seeing? And what, basically, can you just summarize for us, what are the issues that you've been seeing in getting the permits? Where are the delays popping up for you?
What, not one single delay has been insurmountable, they have all been, okay, we have to wait two weeks, okay, we have to wait three weeks, okay, we have to wait four weeks. But every single delay, I think we've hit every single possible delay on roadblocks. But the one that I have mentioned more than once, and I have mentioned it to Mayor Bennett, was when planning wanted us to have, basically forced us to have landscaping put in on a certain area, and then we fought them on that because it was on McGill Crest, and we were asking to not have to put in- and we were asking to not have to put in that landscaping. And when we were, once we agreed to finally put that landscaping in, four months later, the same department told us that we had to take it out because of the McGill Crest widening.
Thank you very much. Really appreciate it. We've had a number of conversations about this and it's a very interesting problem he brings up. I will tell you, there's a lot to it. Yeah. If you wanna spend some quality time, spend it with Mr. Greenwood and then spend it with the planning department and you'll come out really intrigued.
I think I just might go to Divine Distillers instead. Hash out the world's problems over there.
There you go. You're exactly right. Okay, anyone else wanna testify? Who's the guy that said, "I don't wanna testify"?
Somebody.
'Cause he's gonna miss his chance if he doesn't come down. There he is.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. Some of you know me. Some familiar faces in the room. My name is Mark Kudus. I am the Vice Chairman of the West Salem Neighbor Association. We have a bunch of issues. Obviously, one of the biggest topics tonight was homelessness. We need to revisit and look at Hillcrest. It is for sale. It is heated. It is a place, she, the lady here from Eugene has mentioned, when people need to go get a job, where are they gonna put their stuff? It's, it's unused, you have the ability to probably finance that with the state of Oregon if you were to look into doing so. Frankly, downtown is just disgusting. It's just, this is our capital city. We gotta clean it up. And you gotta give these people that are homeless a chance to, to do better for their lives. And that's just becoming a huge issue. It took me an hour and 32 minutes to make I-5 today. Some of these people in City Council, I don't know if some have been here longer than others, not recognizing West Salem's need for a bridge. And I will do it with or without you. Look up at Wegit on Facebook. We will leave the City of Salem if we need to do so. It's just past the point. Additionally, I'm building tangers down in Roswell, New Mexico to address the 737 MAX issue. And one of which is for Mitsubishi is testing 70 to 90 passenger aircraft that potentially would be perfect for Salem. They don't need a long runway. That's all I have.
Great. Thank you very much. Okay. We'll move on then to special orders. No, that's not. Just a second. Give me, give me just a second.
Consent calendar.
Public hearings.
Consent calendar.
Oh, we've got the consent calendar. That's right. There's minutes. Okay. Go ahead. Make your motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move approval of the consent calendar.
Second by Nanki.
The consent calendar is a short one tonight. It includes item 3.1A, draft January 21, 2020, City Council minutes, and item 3.1B, January 27, 2020, draft City Council minutes.
Okay, any discussion? Reserve revision in those minutes fixed, whatever it was? Is that right?
It was revised and we haven't, we received a revision before that.
All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Motion passes. I'm gonna take a five-minute break. Alrighty, we're gonna come back to order then and we're gonna begin our public hearing continuation. I have a supplemental report on multifamily housing design project. Ms. Kim, are you our leader on this? Come on down.
Good evening. I'm Eunice Kim, planner with the Community Development Department, here to answer any questions related to the code amendment for the multifamily housing design project. Just as a reminder, this project really aims to help Salem meet its housing needs by removing barriers to the development of multifamily housing while still ensuring compatibility with existing neighborhoods. As a reminder, this project, the code amendment, isn't changing where multifamily housing is allowed in Salem. It just seeks to create flexibility in how projects can meet design standards and other related regulations. Two weeks ago, the council opened a public hearing on this code amendment and asked for additional information on four different topics: minimum parking requirements, balconies facing single-family zoned areas, bike storage, and picnic tables. So we provided a staff report with additional information and I'm happy to answer any questions that come up. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Just, I think we have just a quick one here. It's, we've got a group of publics to, why don't we catch it? Okay. Very good. Roz Sherek.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilors. I'm, my name is Roz Sherek, and I'm here tonight representing the South Central Association of Neighbors on behalf of Jeff Schumacher, the SCAN president, who's not able to be here tonight. SCAN submitted our comments prior to your January 27 hearing, so I'll just briefly summarize a few points in that testimony. SCAN supports minimum required off-street parking based on the number of bedrooms as proposed in the current proposal before you. And we ask council to keep in that required minimum parking. I know you've talked about this and possibly reducing it more or even eliminating it, but in the, about a year and a half of public outreach, I don't recall eliminating required parking was really talked about at the public workshops. It was more, it was a hotly debated topic, but it was more about how much required parking should there be. So I would hope council wouldn't make a big, real significant change in the proposed parking that really hasn't been discussed among the public yet. Any reduction of parking requirements should be offered only for affordable housing, using up to the 60% of median income as the standard, not the proposed 80% of median income. And the reason for this is if standards are reduced or waived to encourage affordable housing, we feel it needs to truly be affordable and targeting lower-income people. The 80% of median income really benefits market-rate housing that middle-income people could rent. And also, the Statesman Journal had an article on affordable housing that came out about the time of your January 27 hearing, maybe a day or so before. And in that, it talked about affordable housing for rental housing used a standard of 60% of median income, whereas affordable homeownership used an 80%. So we just think the 60% of median is a more appropriate standard to use for the purposes of waiving parking requirements or other standards that would otherwise apply. SCAN supports allowing open space requirements to be met by a mix of private or common open space as proposed, but we oppose allowing a 50% reduction in open space if the development is within a quarter of a mile of a public park. And the reason for that is 50% reduction is a large reduction. And parents of small children still need open place space within sight and sound of their dwelling to allow supervision from home. Barriers to reaching even a nearby park, such as crossing a major arterial, or if someone has mobility issues, can hinder the access regardless of how close that park is. Another issue was the balconies that you had talked about. SCAN supports the proposed prohibition of balconies on building facades that directly face single-family zoned properties for the reasons that staff noted in its staff report. Private open space, such as balconies, are only, is only required on 20% of the units in a large development. So we feel that gives enough flexibility for the developer to locate those balconies on facades not facing single-family residents. And then lastly, the purpose of these amendments is to encourage more multifamily and affordable multifamily housing for Salem residents. And to that end, SCAN asks council to prohibit short-term rentals in residential zones, this includes multifamily as well as single-family, in order to protect the housing supply for Salem residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Roz. Counselor Lewis?
Yeah, Roz, thanks for coming. A lot of issues. I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask a question about the balconies.
About something else?
No, about the balconies.
Oh.
About the prohibition of balconies. That kinda is, is different than what I see we are right now. I live in a neighborhood that, when I look out my window, I look at 150 balconies looking at me. So it appears, at least in the recent past, because those apartments have gone in in the last three years in my neighborhood, single-family residential neighborhood. So why would you, I guess, suggest that it's okay in my neighborhood to have balconies, but not in yours?
Well, it's not a matter of your neighborhood and mine. I think it's a matter of what came before versus what's proposed now.
Well...
And we just think going forward for new development, when the amount of open space, well, one, you know, can be mixed. That gives flexibility, private open space as well as common open space. And since only, for large developments, over 20 units, since only 20% of the units would need to have any private open space, that really reduces the potential number of balconies in terms of being required. Now, if the developer chose to put more in, you know, I suppose they could, but that makes it even more important to have the prohibition against locating those balconies on facades facing a single-family residential zone.
So is the concern, the idea that someone in a new apartment might be looking in your backyard? I mean, I don't...
Well, I think the staff report previously, you know, talked about that. It's basically a major, a matter of privacy. Yeah, especially when you have three, four, or five stories or more, you know, high apartment buildings, that height looking down is, is part of the concern as well. So yeah, we just think it's good planet, good compatibility. I think a lot of cases, you won't, you wouldn't even have a apartment building next to a single-family zone. So probably most of the time, it's a non-issue. But where they are located, next to a single family, to, just to address that privacy issue and enhance compatibility, we think it's a good proposal that staff had made.
Roz, one of the suggestions, as I recall it during the last hearing on this, was, and I'm not sure if, what their term, but it was kind of enclosing the balcony about halfway up or up several feet with a, not a railing, but a hard, a hard surface that would sort of enclose the balcony. Did you guys look at that idea at all?
Yeah. No, we didn't. That kinda came out after we initially talked about the proposed code. So no, we as an organization did not address that.
What do you think of that idea?
Well, it's, it's better than dropping the prohibition. I mean...
Yeah.
And yeah, I mean, it, yeah, it might, it might be okay, but I don't wanna speak for SCAN in that sense.
No, I understand. It's not, it's not as onerous, though, as the open balcony.
Yeah, I would think not.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Counselor Kaser?
Thank you. Thank you for testimony or SCAN's testimony. Just to clarify, SCAN is taking the position of staff recommendation, which is not having balconies facing single-family residential, residential agriculture if they're within 50 feet of that property. Is that correct?
Yes.
So if it's over 50 feet, as staff are recommending, you can have balconies abut in residential zones. But if it's under 50 feet, then you can't. Is that understanding that?
Correct. Although, maybe I should double-check. Was the 50 feet in the original staff proposal that went to Planning Commission? So it was just no balconies? Okay. Well, then I have to say that was the version SCAN actually reviewed.
Okay.
So thank you for clarifying that. Yeah.
Any further questions for Roz? Thank you very much. Natalie Janney?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilors. My name's Natalie Janney. I'm an engineer with Multitec Engineering. Our office is at 1155 13th Street, Southeast in Salem. Here again. I probably won't make it back in two weeks, so I'm kinda hoping that you will finish this tonight. But I just wanted to go over a couple of things. We looked at the new proposal that staff came out with. I'm not gonna, I don't wanna beat the balcony horse too much. But we, we like the idea of just having the option of having the balconies there. So if having them be sight obscuring makes it more palatable for people, I'm not really sure how sight obscuring helps with privacy, but whatever. If that helps it be more palatable for neighbors, then, then that seems like a fair compromise. Like I said, we just, we wanna have the flexibility because that's what this is supposed to be doing. It's supposed to be providing flexibility and removing barriers for multifamily housing. And along that same lines, wanted to talk a second about the bike storage proposal. Sorry, the stairs. I'm like winded. So we, like I said last time, we have had, we have had to deal with similar bike storage requirements in other jurisdictions. But along the same lines of being able to provide housing and make it affordable and flexible, this just adds one more thing on top of it. So now, in addition to having to have open space, and now we have to have more common open space because we don't have private open space because we may not be able to have balconies on all the units, we also have to meet parking and setbacks and water quality. And now we have to find a place to put all these bike storage things. And in Eugene, that means it's a separate building. So, and that's one of the options here, would be to provide a separate building. And while some people might be envisioning that being a roof with like a chain link fence around it, that's not what it ends up being. It ends up being its own building. So it ends up being a building with a permit. It has costs. So for about 180 units, that's an added cost of about $100,000 for a bike storage unit. So just wanted to give some general context for that. Up until about a year ago, we used to, we used to provide bike storage underneath the stairs. But then the fire department came back and said that bikes are combustibles and so we can't put them underneath the stairs anymore. So we were providing covered bike storage until about a year ago. But, but anyway, that's just my thoughts that we had on these, on these new proposals and happy to take any questions.
Counsel Anderson has a question on that.
Thank you for coming back and I'll, I won't keep you on your feet too long, I hope. The questions are always short. Maybe the answers are longer.
I'm long-winded, so...
I wouldn't understand that. So, you know, you're talking about extra spa, extra costs for bike storage. What about if the parking requirement were moved from 1.5 to 1? Wouldn't that save you a whole lot of money?
No, because our clients like to have a parking standard of about 1.75 spaces per unit. That is, in their market research, what provides the best amount of parking so that they don't have overcrowding in the parking lot, they don't have bleed out onto the neighborhood streets. And so they always tend to provide more than the minimum, in our experience. And so reducing the requirement actually wouldn't change the amount of parking that our clients would wanna provide.
Well, conversely, what about if the ceiling were lowered in terms of, you can have more than the minimum up to a certain amount?
Of parking?
Yeah, yeah.
Of vehicle parking?
Yes.
Sure. I think that might upset some neighbors, but we were at a neighborhood association a couple of weeks ago and they said they would like two or three parking spaces per unit provided.
And one final question. I think you were here at the last meeting and Mr. Dorn was there and he was talking. And I asked him, what would he as a developer think if the parking requirements were just eliminated and it was left to the market? And he gave us his answer. Do you have an answer on behalf of Multitec or yourself? What would you think of all parking requirements just eliminated and it was left to the market?
Well, like I said, our clients like 1.75 to 1.8 anyway. And so I think that would probably be fine. I mean, I don't know that every developer would...
Sure.
Would do that, but a lot of our developers, I'm looking at our planner, yeah, a lot of our developers would still provide that level of parking because they, they like to hold on to, they like to hold on to their projects a little bit longer and they don't wanna create problems with their neighbors.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, any, any further questions? Thank you very much. Ted, Bernie? And Ted, you're representing Swan?
Yes.
Okay, five minutes then.
Okay. I'm back, representing Swan. I'm the Land Use Chair for Swan. And I took some of council's concerns and great questions from our last topic on dealing with balconies. And we are dealing with homeless issues, so balconies may not seem quite as important. But it was put forward to us, last time I was here, that perhaps we're seeing apartment dwellers as a second-class citizen group. And I took that to our neighborhood association, and everybody said, "What? We don't see that at all." They said, "We see apartments as a first-time-out-of-the-nest place for young adults. We see it also as perhaps a down, place where many people go when they are downsizing, so maybe for our older folks." And then we see apartments as for people who want to live there. No problem with that. And so we're here in support of staff's recommendation to, their proposal for no balconies facing properties, zoned, single-family, when, with a building facade within 50 feet of a residential property. Originally, staff suggested no balconies at all for apartments, 13-plus apartment units, abutting properties. So we think the new proposal from staff is an excellent compromise for those wishing to develop 13-plus units, apartments, next to or facing RS properties. And so we're in support of no balconies within 50 feet. And privacy is the issue, and one of our neighbors pointed out, said, "It's not just one new neighbor overlooking our property. It's four to five, eight to 10 new neighbors, if balconies are allowed, overlooking residential, single-family, within 50 feet." And a setback for a four- or five-story apartment building would be 50 feet, so it's sort of a no-brainer. And then we also think that this is an opportunity to provide housing for folks in, who might be priced out of housing. We know that balconies are a price point premium in the apartment market. People charge more, pay more for a balcony. Why? Well, little research, not official, is that it provides some more storage. So we think that by not allowing balconies on one side of a building that would be facing residential properties, you actually can present a multi-tiered rental approach, so that you can provide more affordable housing in newer apartments. And it's an interesting concept, because we learned from the Planning Commission that balconies do add cost to apartment developments, and balconies add a lot of maintenance costs down the road. So also, and I may be corrected by Eunice, who knows much more about this than I do, but 60% of appeals dealing with placement of new balconies, or new apartments, seems to deal with balconies facing residential, single-family homes. So we think this staff proposal is an excellent compromise, will help apartments be built a little bit more quickly. It will make homeowners probably less prone to appeal. And then, secondarily, if apartments that are being developed, we could provide covered bike storage. This is a sidebar, away from the balconies. We recommend they add the word "secure" coverage storage. And does anyone? And so thank you for your time.
Thanks for coming down and representing the neighborhood. I just have one question, and it hasn't seemed to come up about balconies. Would you say, as an apartment dweller, a balcony adds or detracts, detracts from the quality of their living?
It depends if you need more storage.
Well, I, I'm gonna...
So I don't know.
I'm gonna tell you, again, 150 balconies looking at my window. I don't see them using it as storage. It rains on the balcony.
Now, what type of, these are apartments, so we're looking at your home?
Correct.
Okay. And how far away are they? Greater than 50 feet? Less than 50 feet?
As it goes in, they're greater than 50 feet.
So, okay, so you're beyond the 50-foot margin, which is what we're asking for. No balconies closer than 50 feet?
Well, then let me ask a follow-up question. Let's say the idea is to move back the development 50 feet from the adjoining, single-family neighbors. What would you say if that 50 feet was now gonna be used for parking?
I don't know. I believe there are requirements for fencing, as well as landscaping, and I doubt that it would be as intrusive as 10 new neighbors overlooking your private residence. I could be wrong on that, but I think it's an eight-foot fence that we're allowing. If it's fewer than so many feet, and it's a six-foot fence between the parking, with landscaping. But I defer, defer to the expert.
Counselor Nordike?
Thank you, Mayor. Forgive me if you already covered this. Did Swan address the parking mandate and whether to reduce it or eliminate it?
We did not discuss parking. The focus seemed to be on the balcony issue, and then if we're providing covered bike parking, many of the people were bike commuters, and they said, "Add the word 'secure.'" But that's a little bit of a sidebar, from what I've permitted to our planner.
Thank you. That's all I had.
Okay, Counselor DeGio.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a follow-up question about the balcony situation.
Okay.
So I'm a renter. I live in, I live in an apartment that has a balcony. And I'm not going out to my balcony to stare at my neighbor's house. I'm going out there because I want some fresh air. I wanna have a, you know, lookout. I mean, sometimes I have my kids play on the balcony, but I mean, there are certain rules and restrictions in terms of what I'm even allowed to have on my balcony. And I'm not using my balcony as storage.
Excellent.
I mean, I have like my barbecue there, because, you know, there's certain rules that you're supposed to follow. You can have a barbecue, you have like certain types of plants, so there's not even any kind of plant you could have. There's only a certain type of furniture you're allowed in that space. So you're mentioning that you, you wanna get rid of the balconies, or if you did have balconies, to have them 50 feet away. So in areas where there are homes next to each other, and there are balconies, let's say it's a two-story house, and next door is another two-story house, your neighbor has a balcony that same level as you, they could look into your yard.
Certainly.
Are there any issues with...
And if you have a kitchen window, and a kitchen window, you can look in. But I think the issue is that you have usually one neighbor, and if that neighbor's a problem, you can address that neighbor. People are looking at four to 10 new neighbors, which may or may not be on a rotating basis. We don't have any problem with people with balconies. We just think this is a great suggestion to not build the balconies facing residential, single-family homes. Because I think, I think the developments will be able to be put on the ground a lot more quickly, and there'll be fewer appeals, which will save developers money, and then we should be able to get people housing a little bit more quickly.
Thank you.
Because this seems, I'm sorry, this seems to be a button for many people, when suddenly, they're used to their private backyard, and then there's the, the construction, and new neighbors. Four or five stories up.
Okay. Any further questions?
Any questions?
Okay, great. Thank you very much, Mr. Fry.
Thank you for your time.
Is there anyone else who wanted to testify on this issue?
Uh-oh, yeah, there is.
Oh, boy. Got a pair of them.
Good evening. My name is Jeremy Mills. I am the Treasurer for Northeast Neighbors. I am not speaking on the Neighbors Association's, I'm sorry, I'm not speaking on the Neighbor Association's behalf tonight.
Right.
I live at 1246 Chameca de Street, Northeast. I believe you've seen this property and several of these materials the city has presented to you. This is a bungalow court on the south side of Chameca de Street. It was recently painted lavender. And in the pictures that were in the materials before, it was white. And so that gives you an idea of where we are. Our, we have 10, 10 one-bedroom units in our complex. We only have six off-street parking spaces. So this complex I'm living in now is existing non-conforming. This complex cannot be constructed under the rules you're considering tonight. I would propose that it be a potential for people to reduce their parking requirements by dedicating land to the city for right-of-way, and have that right-of-way used to create a residential parking district for residents. If we do this, then we will be causing slower traffic in our neighborhoods, or we'll be providing parking on the street, or we're avoiding using private property for vehicle travel waste. I feel that this would create a more cohesive neighborhood, because people will be parking on the streets, they expect to see cars. We won't have driveway cut-throughs and things like that. I don't believe that this should be a way to eliminate all parking spaces in a property. I think maybe a 10 to 25% reduction if you dedicate land, because as I said, the complex I'm living in is existing non-conforming. I'm not sure that our landlord could afford to operate a six-unit complex rather than eight-unit complex.
Any thoughts on balconies?
I support, and I believe our Neighbor Association supported, the 50-foot setback against single-family residences. As he mentioned before, it is the setback anyway. So that avoids those issues, I believe. I also believe that if there are balconies, that you should have landscaping or fencing district.
Great, thank you. Oh, sorry. Counselor Kaser?
Thank you. Thanks, Jeremy. I know exactly where you live, because I think I've been to your front door. But where, where is the parking, the off-street parking in your complex?
We have six spaces on the alley to the south.
Okay.
And then we have the residential parking district in the front.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Pardon me. Anyone, any other questions? Okay, thank you, Jeremy.
Appreciate your time.
Mr. Fry?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor, for that. So I'm Rich Fry, 1100 Liberty Street, Southeast. Former Planning Commissioner, so I'm very familiar with this. Eunice and I have worked on Housing Needs Analysis, the Comp Plan, the everything under the sun, I think. But I just wanted to talk a little bit about the multifamily. I, I own a multifamily complex, and when you talk about taking away the balconies, I think that we're kinda shooting ourselves in the foot. Because if I take all the balconies off my building, people are gonna go rent somewhere else. And people are gonna say, "Well, great, then that's someplace for the homeless to go and live." But it's not, because people aren't gonna build them. If we put up all the barriers, 50 feet, you have to have a fence, you can't put balconies, you can't do this, you can't do that. This whole project was designed to make it easier for people to come in and build affordable housing. That's why we did this. And what, what we're doing is we're starting to put up a bunch of impediments, for instance, the balconies. All right, so we don't want a balcony within 50 feet of the property line. But you can't park between the building and the street or another property without getting the neighbors upset, so, so what happens? So I definitely do not agree that we should take out the balconies, or that we should require 50 feet. I think we should leave it like it is, and things are going along fine, and I believe that that was the Planning Commission's recommendation in the first place, because we spent time at that meeting. There was also an issue about parking between the building and the street. And so this would pull the building up to the, to the street, and then you would park behind it. So every time you would drive in, you'd shine your lights on your neighbors. All the noise that goes on in the parking lot would be between the building and your neighbors. So I don't know why, for a small complex, we can't have parking between the building and the street. It doesn't make sense to me. And it would make more of these more viable. I think that those were the two main issues that, that I've heard, and I'm sorry that I wasn't at the last meeting. I was at another jurisdiction testifying that night. But I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Yes, Counselor Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Fry, for your service on the Planning Commission and another task force, which we're pretty familiar with.
Thank you.
My question to you as a developer is, and this is what I ask Natalie, and I asked Mr. Dorn at the last meeting, is what do you, would you as a developer think about simply no parking requirements, minimum, or maybe a maximum, but certainly no minimum parking requirements, and leaving that up to the market?
I think that even if you eliminated parking, nobody would do no parking. Because the two things that will kill a project, whether it's retail, office, or apartments, is not enough parking. And if you look at the corner Cougar and Commercial, at the Applebee's there with the parking, you know exactly what I'm talking about. So I don't think that there's a developer that, that has any experience at all that would go down. Now, there may be a small project, you know, that for some reason, they would wanna do less, and so if you reduced it, I don't, I think that that might be the only thing. But once you get up to 20 or more, there's no way that anybody's gonna reduce it because of their, their ability to keep tenants in their, in their buildings. And it's the same thing about the balconies. You know, if you start saying, "All right, you have to screen all your balconies now, so you can't look down on your neighbor." But the people that live there, they're residents of our city too, and why shouldn't they be able to view out from their houses, just like everybody that's in a single-family house? So...
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. It, it sounds like, really, what you're saying is, you're making kind of an argument with respect to parking for the market. In other words, even if there were no requirement at all, the market, in your view, is gonna dictate providing some parking at some level that the developer thinks would, would sell the project.
I, I totally agree with that. I'm, I'm at one and three-quarters, if not more, in my unit, and I even have parking under my buildings.
Okay, thank you very much.
Counselor K?
Thank you, Mr. Fry. Would you agree that that probably would go for bike parking as well?
I will tell you that I have a 60-unit apartment complex, and I probably see maybe 20 bikes, and most of them are on my decks. So yes, that's where they're going, is people are taking them up. We provided parking for the bikes down below, and nobody uses it. And I think it's because it's out of sight, and they're afraid of something happening. So they take them up to their units.
So no decks, you'd use your bike parking, then?
Well, I, I don't know that people would do that.
I'm trying to understand your argument here, Rich.
Right. I, I think that people are more comfortable having them secured in their own residence than they are leaving them out.
Okay. Counselor Nordike?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was curious to hear a little bit about bike storage. I'm very interested in making multifamily design more conducive to affordable housing, and I'm sensitive to the fact that making certain requirements can impact the cost of a project. How much more expensive would it be to build bike storage on premises? I mean, is, I mean, I know you, it will depend on the size of the project, but I'm just wondering, as a general rule, when you're building 100 units, how expensive is it to have bike storage for those units? I mean, is it a small cost, big cost of the project? Because it strikes me as something that wouldn't be that expensive, but I'm certainly not a developer.
I think it depends on what you require for the storage. If you require indoor storage with walls and siding and permits and all the rest of that kind of stuff, it gets quite expensive. If you're talking about chain link, it's probably not as expensive. And like I say, we put in storage, we had it set up so that people could park their stuff under the stairs, because that was a perfect place for it. The space wasn't being used. And again, the fire department doesn't like that, and so it was covered, it was secure. I mean, there was all those things, but yet, another department said, "Oh, no, we don't like that," and, and so it's... I hope that answers your question.
Tom Anderson, I, I don't understand. Is your bike flammable?
Yeah, rides in the chambers.
Only when I ride really fast.
So why, why is it inside? All right, anybody else? Nope, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that's everybody. Any questions for staff? Yes, Counselor Lewis?
Yeah, I'm, I'm curious. I think, Eunice, and I guess I'll throw this at you. Under picnic tables, number five, page five of seven, it says, "The current staff recommendation is to allow picnic tables to be there." But yet, it goes on to say, "Eliminating picnic area option. Staff supports eliminating it." So have you changed your recommendation? And if you have, it appears you've changed it between our last meeting and today, so can you explain that?
Sure. So we wanted to present different options to all the different issues that came up, including the picnic table issue. And I think we just, I think we expressed it last time, that we would support eliminating the picnic area option to double-count towards open space.
So why did you recommend it at the beginning?
We wanted to create a kind of a list of different options, from like swimming pools, right, sports courts. And we thought picnic table was kind of a lesser option that other communities have, have provided. But in hearing the testimony, it is less significant in terms of investment and amenity, and potentially temporary. So we just thought we would support that as well.
Okay.
Any, anyone else? Yes, Counselor K?
Thank you. Can you explain or help us understand? In the staff report, when you talk about how the regulation of bike parking is in the Unified Development Code, and I think one of the, sorry, I'm looking for it here. One of the, one of the options was to, for us to wait, essentially, for the UDC to be updated. Can, can you help us understand, I guess, if we take action on multifamily codes specifically, how does that interact with the bicycle parking standards in the UDC? Would we basically, would we maintain separate standards for things, or do they, they merge together, or... Help me kinda understand that.
Sure. So today, we don't differentiate between the type of bike parking... Sure. So today, we don't differentiate between the type of bike parking that's required, long-term versus short-term. And we don't say that it has to be racks versus sheltered versus, we just give the standards that if you do a rack, it needs to meet these certain standards. If you do a bike locker, it needs to be, meet these dimensional, et cetera, standards. We could put something in for bike parking. We had recommended having a more comprehensive look at it. We had wanted to do that before the prior update to the UDC last summer. And so it's something that we would like to look at for all uses, not just multifamily. We could put in some small language. We would probably, if we did a big update, change it to make it all consistent for multifamily.
Thank you. Anyone else? Counselor K?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Regarding minimum parking requirements, you added in room-and-board facilities. So affordable, single-room. What's their parking requirement now? Are they required to have one per each?
One per four units.
Studio apartment?
One per bedroom.
I thought there were no bedrooms, it's just a single room.
Right. One per room.
Okay.
Right. So that, so that came in response to a letter that we got from the Salem Housing Authority. And so they have created Redwood Crossings, which has single-room occupancy. And they had suggested reducing the parking requirements, given that the clients that typically live there don't actually need the parking.
Sure. And we're seeing more and more of those coming around as well, just for affordability.
More affordable option, exactly.
Yeah. Thanks.
Yes, Counselor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Kim, could you address some of the issues raised by Mr. Frye? I saw you taking some notes on some of his concerns. Could you talk about those a little bit?
The balconies?
The balconies, the street, the parking between the street and the building specifically.
So the balcony issue, we initially proposed not allowing balconies facing single-family zoned properties. It is one of the biggest issues that is often raised whenever there's a multifamily development that's proposed next to a single-family neighborhood. When we did outreach on that, there was pretty broad support from the neighborhoods, from residents, to do that. When we got to the planning commission, the planning commission didn't want to put any restrictions on the balconies. And so they recommended removing that prohibition completely, so balconies could be anywhere. So between, after that recommendation, we tried to think internally of a compromise that would still address compatibility with single-family existing neighborhoods, but would create that flexibility. So if someone did want to provide the balconies, they could still be facing single-family. And that's when we put the 50-foot in. After last meeting, other options came up, including from Mike Erdman, and I think Counselor Lewis brought it up as well. If you could screen the railing, so you could create at least some privacy, the balconies could be there. So we threw that out as an option. We do want to make sure that we create flexibility, and we're not creating more barriers to the siding, the design of multifamily. So we would be supportive of that option as well. We have not brought that option out to the community, obviously, for input. I know the community generally wanted that 50 feet. They were supportive of no balconies at all, but...
And then the parking between the building and the street?
That's largely a compatibility issue that came up through our outreach. And particularly, Nen, for example, brought up, there's a smaller multifamily development in an otherwise kind of single-family area, and the parking is built out front right now. And it really does break up the character of the neighborhood. So it's really a compatibility issue.
Thank you.
Just on that point from, that's a long-term concern in that neighborhood, parking in front of homes. Whether it has okay parking on the lawn or anything else. So just be aware of that. That is a big deal in that neighborhood. Counselor K? Did I see your hand? No? Okay, Counselor Anderson.
Thanks. I have a number of questions, Mayor. No surprise, again. Looking at the multifamily housing, the house up there, the apartment on the right-hand side, when we're talking about balcony screening, we're talking about from the railing below. So in effect, what we're screening it from is the neighbors looking up there and seeing somebody's bike, or their Hot Wheels, or whatever they would store that would be lower than the railing. Is that right?
Or apparently their telescope.
Yeah, yeah. They can still do that above the railing. I mean, that's all we're doing with the screening of the railing. We're still having, and anything higher than the railing is open to look out.
Right. And the example that was brought up when I think this issue came up last meeting was, if someone's sitting, obviously, it would be a little different than if someone was standing and the railing was obscured.
Okay. Then... The 50 feet, there's no setback. What is the setback requirement, assuming no balconies?
It's based on the height.
So if you have a five-story building, it's one foot per foot of height?
If it's 50, it'd be 50, right.
Okay. So if it's a two-story, that's 20, and so you've got a 20-foot, you know, the balcony is maybe 12 feet or 14 feet, and there's an eight-foot fence that has to be opaque. Then what about the tree requirements?
We require landscaping as well.
Okay. So you would have the trees or landscaping that would be screening, and you would also have a fence at least eight feet high that would be screened?
Six feet.
Six feet, okay. The, it seems like there are a couple issues that we've all been talking about that are broader than the multifamily housing design project. And one of them is your issue about what's required for biking structures. And the other is, what is the number of spaces? Well, the broader situation about, do we have any code requirements for parking at all? Let's assume that this is passed in one of the iterations that is proposed here today. And this is kind of a follow-up on Counselor K's questions. Then how do we deal with those other two issues? And how would they be folded into this or any other larger apartment complex?
So the bike parking, we would look into at the next update. We try to do the updates to the UDC every other year. Sometimes we're behind. Eliminating parking completely, is that your question?
Yeah.
If the council asked us to look further into that as part of an update to the UDC, we could fold that in as well.
Well, I intend to ask the council to ask that, whether the council as a whole wants to have you look at it. That'll be another issue. But it's not an issue for this particular situation. I don't know that I have any other questions. I'm more, I'll have some comments later when we look at the proposals, B, C, D, and E, or whatever they are.
Yes, Counselor K?
Thank you. So we're talking a lot about balconies, but I wanted to come back, I guess, to just the requirement for private open space in general. So the, it seems like, depending on how many units you're building, the requirement for private open space changes. So not every, am I correct? And my understanding that not every unit is required to have private open space. They're not required to have a patio or a balcony. You can have units that don't have those and still meet code.
Today, every unit needs to have private open space.
Today. But what we're proposing...
Right. In the proposal, larger project, 20 or more units, only 20% would be required to have balconies. You could do more if you wanted.
Okay, but you don't have to. So today, the current code is, what is the trigger for private open space for every unit?
Every unit.
Regardless of how much multifamily? Okay, so you could have like a three unit, and you have to provide, okay, or a 300 unit, and, okay. So the proposal then is 20% of those. And then you would have to have one common open space also, at least, right? Okay. My second question was going back to the testimony we received about these older bungalow or cottage courts, that we have quite a few around town, and they were typically built like in the 20s or 30s, where you have a lot of like tiny houses, essentially, surround, like on a couple of city lots. And they might have some off-street parking, they might not. Would a complex that Mr. Mills described, where it's eight units, it's got six, I think six, he said, I can't remember now, off-street parking spaces, would that comply under this? I know you might not be familiar with the site, but in general, could developments like that be constructed under the proposed code?
So twofold. One of the reasons we wanted to create this, the kind of smaller category of multifamily, the five to 12 units, is to enable the cottage cluster development, which is very difficult to do today. In terms of parking, we're requiring, or we're proposing one unit per parking space, or per unit, and that up to 12 units. But you could have a reduction if you were close to transit, affordable units, more bike storage, car share. So you could potentially get there, but not, but not just straight off.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Anderson?
Thank you. I've got notes in three different places, so now I found the other two places. Could you comment on Ms. Shurak's discussion from SCAN about two things, about the 60 to 80% of median income issue, and then the reduction in open space if it's within a quarter of a mile of a park?
Yes. So we are recommending that the parking requirement could be reduced for affordable units. And we initially recommended at 60% of median income. That was based on, so in our code today, we define affordable housing in two different ways. One is at 80%, and one for state, meeting state requirements, is 60%. We went with the 60%, the lower affordability. And then at the planning commission, they wanted to raise it to 80, to be more encompassing of like workforce housing, for example. So we agreed with that. We need a range of affordability types here in Salem, and so we went with the 80%. It sounds like SCAN would like it to go back to the 60. And the second issue was...
The quarter-mile of parks.
Oh, right. So we're recommending that the open space requirement can be reduced by 50% if it's within a quarter-mile of a public park, urban community, or neighborhood park. The thinking being that if we can create more space for housing, if it's close enough to an amenity like open space, like a park, we can do that on-site. And we can also encourage more people to use our public parks.
And a quarter of a mile is what, two and a half city blocks?
It's about three downtown blocks.
Three blocks, okay, for a toddler to walk to a park? Okay. Yeah. Then, what, I know the proposal that was in front of us two weeks ago, reduce the parking requirements. And I cannot tell you what, from what they were reduced, but I think it's, now it is 1.5, the minimum?
Currently.
That's what your proposal is, or is that's what it is now?
What it is today.
And your proposal is to reduce it to?
So for the smaller units, 12 and under would be one unit, one space per unit. For the larger, 13-plus, 100 units, et cetera, it would depend on the type of unit. So a studio or one bedroom?
The bedrooms.
Exactly.
And so what if it's a studio or a two-bedroom? Those are the two.
Studio, one bedroom would be one space per unit. And then any larger bedroom would be the one and a half, like today.
Okay, okay, okay.
Okay. Any further questions? I'm going to close the public hearing then, and we will see how we'll move forward on this, okay? Counselor Hoy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move we engross ordinance bill number 1-20, amending the Salem Revised Code to update design standards for multifamily housing, and advance the engrossed ordinance bill to second reading for enactment.
Second.
There we go.
Thank you. Thank you for the second. So what this proposal does, I realize that there could be a lot of amendments or potentially to this. This takes us back to the original recommendation, staff recommendation from the last meeting. So that's where we're, that's where this motion takes us. If anybody wants to adjust from there, we could certainly entertain amendments. But I felt like it was a very good compromise that staff came up to last time. I was ready to vote then. I support their analysis, and I think it gives, I do think it increases our flexibility. And I just think it's a good proposal, and I'm ready to go.
Okay. Could I, just a thought on this, as we go through this real quickly, hopefully, go to page six of the staff report. You've got that outline. I think that's the best one maybe for us to work off of. And then you can call them out, like 1A or 1B or something like that, if you want to try to amend this, if you see something you'd like to do to amend the proposal. Does that make sense to everybody? That helps, I think it'll help us get it through. Counselor Anderson?
Thank you. I think it would be easy, I have a number, if we're on page six, number one with the A, B, and C. I think I would, I have two amendments, and I'd like to make them one at a time.
Right. I think that's the better way to go, is maybe go through all five and see if there are changes.
My first amendment is 1B on the summary, move to amend the motion to eliminate minimum parking requirements for multifamily projects in the Central Salem Development Program area.
Second.
Okay, second by Nordike. So you're going to amend going to 1B?
Yes, sir.
Okay. You want to talk about it all?
Well, I think the staff on page two of their report provided a rationale why that could be done and why it could also be possible. And it kind of fits in with the Co's development that we just had, where we, it was like an 86-unit apartment complex that would have, would have required, I think, 120-some spaces, and we waived it down to 16 spaces, under the thought that it's downtown, it's walkable, there are other parking areas that are available in the city parking, garages, several of them. And I'm sure there's some private lots that rent parking by the month, too. So this is, this follows along the council's decision on the Co's apartments.
Counselor Nanki?
Just a question regarding the previous motion to amend, because we're, the original motion was to engross and go, and the second kind of option on the front end was refer it back to staff to incorporate things. So are we moving into that second, refer it back to staff and?
That's what his motion does, to have them engross it. What we're doing now is seeing if there are any amendments to the staff recommendation.
But would that be engrossing or sending it back to staff to try to incorporate then? Because it sounds like there's still some more work that needs to be done if we change from, what's on the...
So you're, the motion to amend to change the ordinance reflective of the options would send it back to staff?
Okay.
And we would write them up, and you'd come back and look at them again?
Just wanted to make sure we were...
Yeah, I think we were.
Good on that.
We're good. Okay, K?
Thank you. Well, I appreciate the motion from Counselor Anderson. I won't be supporting it. The reason why is the Central Salem Development Program boundary expands more than just, I think, what we might consider downtown. It goes all the way up to generally Hood Street into very residential areas, where you're not going to have access to parking garages. I mean, they're going to be like a mile away or more. And I'm good with like the Co's development, because it is right downtown. It's very accessible to on-street parking, to parking garages. But this area we're talking about is more than just what you might be thinking when you're thinking about downtown. It goes all the way down to Mission Street, it goes all the way out to 12th. And I think those neighborhoods are going to really feel the effects as they already do, like mine, with there's not a lot of off-street parking already, and the pressure of that is going to increase. I think staff's recommendation is fair. I think it's less than what's required now. I think it's balanced in that way. I think if we had better turnover downtown of parking, if we had more parking garages, more parking in general available, that turned over at some rate, this would be more doable right now. But as it currently stands, I just don't see this as being a good, a good compromise.
Okay. Counselor Nordike?
Sure. Thank you. I, too, support eliminating parking mandates. So I support 1B. I would also support 1C, and I don't think we've gotten to 1C, so I'll hold off on discussing that. But let me tell you why. Right. So included in our materials was an academic paper on parking behavior, bundled parking and travel behavior in the American cities. And it states that households with bundled parking use transit less, spend more on gas, and when they do take transit, are more likely to drive from their homes to the transit stop. The point of making design changes is to incentivize behavior and to look towards the future. And the future will have less cars per person. We know that self-driving cars are already on the roads. We know that folks already want to live downtown and not need a car every day. We know that neighbors want to have walkable neighborhood hubs that, again, do not require a car, simply to pick up the loaf of bread from the store. Design is about incentivizing behavior. It's about looking to the future. We need to incentivize these changes. Salem is growing, and the fact of the matter is, not everyone is... Salem is growing, and the fact of the matter is, not everyone, especially our seniors, are going to want, need, or in some cases even be able, to drive a car. We also have a robust student body. We are extremely blessed to have Willamette University right in the heart of our city. I know a number of students and recent graduates from Willamette who walk on a regular basis. We have to incentivize the reality that single-car driving for every single driver-age person doesn't make sense down the road. And if we are to incentivize these changes, we do so by leading, and we do so by making changes to design. So that's why I support eliminating parking mandates. Plus, we've already heard from the developers. All this is doing is freeing up our developers, and I want to make it simpler for them. There is such a huge need for affordable housing statewide. Our affordable housing crisis has everything to do with our homelessness crisis. Let's make it cheaper to build these things. And, meaning that they don't have to provide parking, when sometimes people don't want or need parking, is just one small modest step. If the developers decide that the market dictates they want a spot, fine, but they should not be required to do so, because there will be plenty more people who do not need or want to pay for the cost of a parking spot. Remember, the parking spot costs money. It makes your apartment more expensive to have to include a parking space. If you don't want one and you don't need one, then why should you have to pay for one? And why should we force developers to make, to build one? So that's why I am in favor of eliminating these parking mandates and incentivizing a greener approach to our future.
Counselor Nanki?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wholeheartedly agree with the end of those final statements in regards to the incentivizing behavior. This is, what we're doing here is to try to maximize the affordability of housing and maximize those designs down the line. Yeah, there's self-driving vehicles coming into play, there's people who are, are using bicycles, there's people who are using other modes of transportation as well, and depending on what those are, you can't regulate that way all over town. So we're trying to ma, maintain maximum flexibility. I'm, I'd be fine with getting rid of them in their entirety, no matter their location at all, and leave it up to the market to actually decide that, because that's what we've heard. It's like, no, I'm gonna use 1.75, because that's my clientele needs. The more affordable end of that, maybe not, because they don't necessarily want or can afford a car, and they're using some other kind of alternate transportation as well. So if, if we had a 1D, just to get rid of it all, I would go for that.
Counselor Anderson?
Thank you. While agreeing with what Counselor Nanki and Counselor Nordike said, we're only looking at one little particular area here.
No anarchy here.
Yeah. We're gonna look at the broader issue coming up, and I look at the map of the CSDP, which is one of the attachments, and I can understand Counselor for Ward 1's concern, but when I look at the, where it actually is, it's the west side of Church Street, not the east side, and it looks like the major part of the residential area is on the east side. In other words, outside of the CSDP, and that's true as you go north of Hood Street. And I also would say, here in Ward 2, Gayety Hill is included in that, and that's single-family residential, and I'm still willing to make that motion, so I support the motion.
Excellent. Counselor Kazer?
Thank you. I, I would just, as the only person here besides the mayor that actually lives in this area, I'm gonna say that most places here do not have off-street parking available to them already. And I, I think I know where most everyone lives on the council, and I believe, with the exception, I think with Council, Counselor Lynn, everyone has a driveway, and an ability to park their car on private property, on their property. So I would very, especially since we're just talking about this specific area, I am gonna go on the record to say, I know this probably better than anyone else besides the mayor, I would say. And I think that this would be a mistake right now to do, within this area. And I understand Counselor Nordike's point, Counselor Nanki, Counselor Anderson, all of it. I just don't think taking away, going to that extreme of just saying, no parking at all, is, is the right thing for us right now. I think we could make a goal of getting there. I think we could reduce it. I think staff have done that. But I think you're going to get a lot of neighbors concerned that they will not be able to find parking on the street that they're already parking on, because more developments will come in. And when you're talking about having possibly, you know, another 20 people living on your block, you're not just walking a block away, you're, you're walking like half a mile away. And especially when you're talking about people who might be disabled, or they need to be able to park close to their, their, their building. I just think it's, I guess if you want to start in an area, I would pick a different part of the city, that, where you have homes that have driveways, because you already have that privilege of driving, of parking on your own property.
Yeah. I really agree, Counselor. I, I know, as you pointed out, I know that very, very well, live generally in it, and have lived in different parts of it, and, and what, what Counselor's saying is just absolutely correct, particularly this neighborhood. This is an aging neighborhood. This decision to force people to park their cars further distance from their home is really gonna be a trial for a lot of those folks. This is, this would, this is just the wrong neighborhood to start this. And I, I understand Gayety Hill working, but I'm not sure it works in, in our neighborhood, where Kazer and I do all our walking. Counselor Lynn?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So to clarify both your position and Counselor Kazer's position, for the first one, you're against B, and you prefer A, or?
Yeah, the count, the main motion, I'd stay with the main motion.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Lewis?
Well, I, I'm gonna support the motion, maybe for some odd reasons, but we're not, although it says eliminate minimum parking, we've heard over and over again that the developers are going to develop based on their ability to be successful. And if they're putting in a multi, multi-unit development in a particular area that has no driveways, then they're probably gonna be much more inclined to put in parking. On the other hand, the purpose, as I see it, of what we're doing here tonight, in the last meeting, in the meeting before, is to increase flexibility so we can decrease the costs and bring in some affordable housing. This does that. The idea that we are so concerned about not being able to park in front of our house is legitimate, but I gotta tell you, when you go to real cities, big cities, well, I'll give you an example. Couple of years ago, I went to dinner at a house in Brooklyn, and the topic of the conversation at the dinner table was, we got to park in front of our apartment for the first time in three months, and it was an exciting conversation.
I saw that episode on Seinfeld.
Yeah. So the idea that finite amount of land, growing number of people, we need to utilize all of the land that we can, and that includes parking on the street. In the inner-city neighborhoods, we're gonna see more and more of that. That's part of life.
Are we ready to vote on the amendment, then? Yep. Okay. So it's 1B that the counselor has proposed to amend on to Counselor Hoy's motion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
No. Let's get the noes up. Okay. Motion passes. Okay.
I have another one now.
Okay.
I move to amend the amended motion to go with option 1C on page six, to eliminate minimum parking requirements for multifamily projects within one-quarter mile of Chariot's core network.
Second. Second, by the way.
From the amount of seconds, I don't think there's much I need to say. It's in the, it's in page two and three of the, of the staff report, and we're trying to work with Chariot's any way we can, and I think this is just another way to do it. And I've seen, one of the attachments is the core network, and looking at those, those make pretty much sense to me, that it would be advantageous to people who live in those areas to potentially have use of the bus, and it would also make any development probably more affordable, because they wouldn't have to necessarily build parking unless they determine that that's what the market requires them to do.
Counselor Kazer?
Hey, K, I'm just curious, Counselor Anderson, why not expand this to the entire city? Why limit it just to within the network?
Well, I think that question is more, would be more appropriately directed to number 1B than 1C, but at some point, that's the way I'd like to go, so this is...
Why not go now?
Because we haven't had any discussion of it. We're just looking about one specific area now. We're not, you know, at some point, just like the parking requirements, we'll be asking the staff to come back with, decide that whether we, we don't have any minimum of parking requirements, and let the market control.
Well, then I would offer a substantive motion to expand this, to require no parking minimums for the entire city, regardless of where they're placed.
Yeah. It's an amendment to, to your amendment. Let's, let's go that far.
And I'll, and I'll speak to it. If we're gonna, if we're gonna pick on downtown in Ward 1, because it's close to things, then it should be across the city, the same things. Because I can already envision the argument will be, but people have to park their cars someplace. And that's exactly what we've just done to all the folks living in or even near downtown, downtown within a mile and a half of downtown, saying that you're gonna have to find parking someplace else, because there's not gonna be a whole lot left, and we don't have plans to build any more kind of parking structures. So I don't see why we're not expanding this to the rest of the city, especially given that most of those single-family homes have driveways, and they have garages, because they're newer construction than in Ward 1.
Counselor Hoy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was with you on the first one, but I can't be with you on this one, unfortunately, Counselor Kazer. Just to remind folks, the, the issue with the core network is, that means that Chariot's is committed to 15-minute service on those routes, and that's really the key. So we have a really robust transit system on that core network. It's not, it's not every 30 minutes, and it's not every one hour. On that core network, we have 15-minute bus service, which, which makes it a viable option for folks who can actually go carless. So that's why I think this is a really good idea, to keep it related to the core network.
So core network then includes the entire city? It's kind of?
It, it's various, it's Lancaster, it's Market, it's, I don't recall all of them off the top of my head, Commercial, Liberty, Center, State, Edgewater. It's those streets.
Did you under, did you understand that, Counselor?
I do understand, I just don't agree.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure.
And, and I'll, and I'll say why. I think there's a presumption that within the Central Salem Development Program boundary, that there's all these services there, but there's not. There's, we have, there's exactly one grocery store there, so if people are going to, you know, park their car a half a mile away so they can go to the grocery store, that, that I see that as an issue. I, I think, I think I'm just very concerned that the perspective that the council has is they're, they're thinking about their own homes and their ability to park on their own private property. And for the people who live in this part of Salem, largely that is not feasible for them already. And we're going to already contribute by the motion we just passed, so why not then put that out to the entire city? Why exclude parts of the city that actually have the most privilege to park on private property?
Do, do you, though, read this, that this is city, citywide, if it's part of the core network, rather than, am I, am I just reading this right?
I agree. I, I, like I said, I understand, I just, I don't agree. Why limit, if you're further than a quarter of a mile away?
Okay.
Well, I mean, we're, we're now looking at literally having people park half a mile from their house, within the central part of Salem, but if it's outside of that, well, they can't do more than a quarter. I have a problem with that.
Ah, okay. Gotcha. Counselor Nanki?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, we're getting back to what the market determines, and the closer I am to a transit stop, the less parking spaces I may actually choose to put in, because other people have more options. The further away I get, the more parking I'm gonna have to put in to actually get people to, to rent my units.
Okay. Counselor Anderson?
Thank you. I think we're maybe losing sight that this is talking about multifamily projects, both the motion that was passed and the motion that we're debating now. It's not eliminate parking requirements for single-family homes. And I would say that if it were to come to that, I might support what Counselor Kazer is saying, but we've gotta have some study and discussion and reporting back from the staff. The staff has done that with respect to multifamily houses. They haven't done that with respect to eliminating any parking requirements on single-family units.
Okay. Okay. Everybody ready to vote? Go.
Can you remind us what the current motion is, or current substitute is?
Yeah, this is a, this is an amendment to add, add citywide to C, was it, Counselor? Yeah.
With respect, citywide, multi, multi-developments, multi-unit developments, or citywide NE housing.
No, it's multi-unit. She's just saying this, this would apply citywide.
So it would apply citywide, and it wouldn't be necessitated by being within a quarter mile of a?
Okay.
Transportation network?
Ah, okay. Okay. All, all those in, are you okay? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Aye, may here. Okay, nays up. Okay. Motion passes.
Nope.
Nope?
No. Motion fails.
I, I mean, were there? Let's see it again.
Nays, raise your hand.
Ah, okay. I'm sorry. Motion fails.
So are we back to Counselor Anderson?
Back to Counselor Anderson's.
We're back to 1B.
Kathy, did we second that?
No, 1C.
That's all set to go?
No, that's all, that's all ready to go.
Y'all ready to vote on that?
No, excuse me, 1C, we're on 1C.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
No? Okay. Noes? Okay, motion passes. Okay.
I got another one.
Okay.
I move that we amend the twice amended motion to number 2 on page 4A, that is, eliminate minimum parking.
Go to 6, go to 6.
Oh, excuse, oh, yeah, 6, okay, I'm sorry. Number 2A on number 6, eliminate parking requirements for room-and-board facilities.
Okay. Second by Hoy. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion passes. Okay. Now what?
I got one more, just, it's, it's number 5 on page 6. Number 5B, eliminate the picnic area option from the list of possible active recreational opportunities that can be counted, double-counted toward the open space requirement.
Second. Second by Ossie.
We've discussed this a bit with staff, and, and I, I don't really have anything to add, but to what the discussion has been.
Okay. Good, Counselor?
Could the motion repeated, please?
Eliminate the picnic area option from the list of possible active recreational opportunities that can be double-counted. In other words, if you have a picnic area, it will not count as meeting your requirement for open space recreational areas.
And the current proposal, it's your motion, what was it? Say it again.
It, it allows the picnic areas to count towards the open space requirements.
Okay.
Double count, sorry.
Double count, okay. All those? Oops, sorry. Counselor?
So I just have a, a question. If our goal is to incentivize affordable housing, and perhaps this is a question for staff, help me understand, does eliminating the picnic area in, as a double-counting, does that incentivize or disincentivize affordable housing? that incentivize or disincentivize affordable housing? By impacting the cost?
Well, the idea, the whole idea of double counting is that when we went out to the public, people wanted open space that was usable, so the active recreation, not just kinda green patches all over. And so we were incentivizing that type of usable open space. I, I guess a picnic table option would be cheaper than a swimming pool or court, sports court, but we didn't, that wasn't the reason for the proposal.
Okay, everybody ready? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Yes.
Now I move that we amend the multi amended motion to apply the 60% median income reduction for affordable housing as opposed to the 80%. And, oh, I don't have a second yet.
Okay, what else you wanna try?
Well, okay, that's it. Okay, scan neighborhood, Roz-
Do I need a second on this?
Yeah, I know, but-
Who'd you get?
Clarification.
No, I, I wanna hear a second.
I'll second it.
Okay.
There was, there is a reduction, and maybe you could explain the reduction, Unis, because I'm getting, I think it's just for the amount of units you can put in, but, but I like the 60% versus the 80% because it seems to me that that makes, makes it more easy for people at the lower income level to get into multi-units.
The 60 versus 80% has to do with the parking requirement.
Okay.
So we were proposing to reduce parking requirements for affordable units and we were gonna define affordable as-
Okay.
-the 80%. They wanna divide at the 60.
I understand that now. It's, again, we're back on parking. That seems to be the major discussion. And it seems to me that 60% is a better standard than the 80% based on the fact that that would end up eliminating more parking requirements, which we believe would end up making the units themselves more affordable.
I'll follow up on Councilor Nordy's question. Does that then incentivize the construction of low income, or affordable housing?
It would mean that units that were more expensive, so that at the 80%, kinda the workforce, wouldn't get the parking reduction. If you were affordable to the lower income, the 60%, you would get the parking reduction.
They would get the parking reduction.
Right, so the 80% would actually open it up more.
So if you wanna incentivize affordable housing, which, which is the-
It depends if you wanna just incentivize the lower income, the 60%, people who make 60% households versus 80%.
Or all. I mean, if you go to 80, you'd also include 60, right?
Exactly.
Yeah, I mean, it's the more people who can get into housing. So if you're incentivizing, you're incentivizing at 80% more affordable housing.
Okay, so-
This would limit the inventory of affordable housing being built.
Then that's counterintuitive to me. What you're saying is at 80%, you, you would end up with more affordable housing than at 60%. Now, I would draw, if that's the case, Unis, are you saying yes?
Let me just clarify.
Okay.
So in Marion County, right now, the median family income is roughly $62,000. So if a household makes 80%, they can make up to around $50,000. And we would say, if a unit is affordable to that income level, you could have a parking reduction. At the 60% of household could only make up to about $37,000. So a lower income unit essentially would get the parking reduction, not the higher income unit, the 80% income. Does that make sense?
So at 80%, if somebody was making 60%, they would still get the, the reduction?
Yes, yes.
So then 80% would actually enable more parking reduction than 60%.
Yes, yes.
Then I'm gonna withdraw my motion.
Yeah, and the second agrees. Thank you. Okay, who wants to take on balconies? Louis, I knew I'd get ya.
Yeah. I move that we remove proposed restrictions on balconies on buildings facing, facades facing RS and RA zone properties and require balconies on buildings, facades facing RS and RA zone properties to have fully site obscuring railings.
So that would be 3C?
Both of them.
Both of them, 3B and C?
3B and C.
Go ahead.
I think if you surveyed the folks in the inner-city neighborhoods where you want a whole bunch of more people living in your neighborhood, the answer would clearly come back, no, thank you. But that's where we are. There's a, there's a charge for us to increase our density because we're running out of land and the land that we have now for housing is prohibitively expensive. So it's a matter of me of welcoming new residents as we increase our density. If we're afraid of them looking at us, close your curtains. But don't, don't take away what many consider to be the greatest aspect of their apartment, and that is the ability to step outside, get a breath of fresh air, and then go back inside.
Okay, Councilor Anderson, against fresh air?
Yeah, I have some questions for the staff. Under the amendment as proposed by Councilor Louis, if you have a 20-story, a two-story building, it's 20 feet back or however high the building is, and so if you have a five-story building, it would, five-story building, it would most likely be 50 feet back or even 60 feet back. So that particular part of the code would still apply. The higher the building, the longer, the wider the setback. Okay.
We, we kinda discussed this in other, on other issues, you recall, though? Okay. Yeah, I thought you- Councilor Kizer?
Just wanted to point out that right now, the code requires every unit has to have private open space. And the proposed code does not. It's 20% of units. I mean, it's a significant change. So I think, you know, Councilor Louis, what you're experiencing now, where you have 100-plus units facing your, your residentially zoned property, might not be the case with or without having this amendment pass, so. But I do think that's a fairly significant change to, to necessitate the, the increase of affordable housing. This is an incredibly contentious issue. It's apparently, I had no idea it was, but if you break down who, who you're talking to, it really seems that the neighborhood associations are very concerned about balconies within 50 feet. And the, the other side of that, I guess, is the, the developers, the, the businesses that are actually developing these places want that. And I can see both sides. They want the flexibility, the neighbors are concerned about privacy, but looking at where things stand, that's how it's breaking down. I'm not seeing a whole lot of neighbors coming here saying, yes, we want, we want balconies, so. But I do think that not requiring every single unit to have private open space and only 20% is drastically different than what, what, what you're required to have now.
Councilor Nanki?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Going with that, that may mean that people won't stick balconies facing an RS or an RA or any at all, or as few as possible. Balconies add an extra expense as well. Depending on site topography will determine whether or not they actually face that direction versus an alternate direction as well. Again, we're trying to minimize restrictions to streamline affordability of, of these units. And if, depending again on where they are, they may not want to put them in there because that will raise the price up higher than what someone may be willing to, to pay in rent. So they won't be adding balconies necessarily just for the sake of adding balconies if it doesn't make it cost-effective in the long run.
Okay, Councilor Louis?
Yeah, I just wanna point out, this motion doesn't require balconies. It just doesn't prohibit them.
And requires them to have the site.
If they're gonna be there, yes.
Yeah, if they're, okay. Alrighty, any further discussion? All those in favor of the amendments, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Nay.
Ah, let's see the ayes. I think it passes. Motion passes. Did I say that, Amy?
Out loud?
Out loud, I, I thought it really loud. Okay, good. Okay, we've got an amended motion now on the table, unless there's something else someone wants to add? No? Okay, so, all in favor of the amended motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Very good, thank you. That, that was a, yeah, that was. So you will bring us back now, and sort of an engrossed version of this? Okay. When will that be?
Somewhere.
2022.
Thinking of Mr. Greenwood's problem here. How long is this gonna take?
Seven, end of meeting.
The next meeting.
Next week?
The next meeting.
Next meeting, okay. Okay, we're gonna go to special orders of business. This is a report on camping. Okay? Alrighty, we're gonna move to information reports. If I don't have a motion, I just move right along.
Then I'll, I'll, I'll make a motion to discuss. I move that we eliminate the parking ban except in residential-
Camping.
Uh, camping, excuse me. I'm living in the past. I move that we eliminate the camping ban in downtown. In fact, I will make it the, what was that called? The CSBP? No, I, I wanna eliminate the camping ban except in the downtown area, which I would define as the downtown, the thing that we were talking about in the last motion.
Well, it's, it's got a definition.
Yeah, I know, and I'm looking for it.
It's got a map.
DSPD. Let me just see, it's right here. Eliminate, eliminate the camping ban except in the Central Salem Development Program in, in public parks and in residentially zoned areas.
Did you second that, Ossie?
Yeah. Can I get clarification on the motion? Because I believe you said eliminate the camping ban in the CDSP residential area.
No, except in CDSPB residential areas and city parks. This has been a very tough and hard issue on all sides. And I see that the council, justifiably, can be subject to some criticism that we are kicking the can. I don't know if we're kicking it down the road, we're kicking it back and forth across the same road. We've had a lot of information that has, some has been correct, some has not been correct. We've had a lot of emotion on all sides. But it remains to me to, I, I believe that before we had the camping ban, which was introduced except for a ban in city parks, that was introduced when we started this back, at least in December and maybe before. People were camping and they were camping in sort of out-of-the-way spots and it wasn't it was there, but it was not in the areas that, that I would still keep the camping ban, that's in the, in the downtown core, in the residential areas, and in the city parks. And there were problems with that when we didn't have a camping ban. And there are still gonna be problems with the camping ban, but if there is no camping ban, I think it'll probably go back to, and I'm sorry, I'm gonna use a legal term, status quo anti, meaning what, what it was before we passed the law. It's not a perfect solution, but it just seems to me that until we end up with the many, many, many things that we have planned long-term, and the city manager indicated some of them that we have done earlier, and I know the director of the Salem Housing Authority is here, who is doing other things, and our goal is to eliminate homelessness, but eliminate it by providing housing. And there are a lot of units that are on the way on that, but until they come up, we've got the immediate problem facing us now.
Councilor Hoyt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I guess just to restate sort of what Councilor Anderson was saying is, we're focused, we've been focused on the long-term solutions and we have not been traditionally focused at all on the short-term. And we found ourselves this year in a short-term crisis. And we have been kicking the can back and forth across the street because we're trying to, to do what's right and it hasn't, hasn't worked out for a variety of reasons that we don't need to rehash right now. Hasn't worked out the way we envisioned. We do have efforts in, underway to develop short-term solutions, but they're not, they're not quick, unfortunately. We do have a potential low-barrier shelter coming. We do have a potential navigation center coming, but they're not gonna be here tomorrow. My, my concern with this proposal, this, this motion, is that I don't, I don't think it's manageable. I don't think it's manageable for the people that we're asking to, who are, who don't have a place to live, who would be subject to this. Are they gonna go find a map and look and see where they can, where they can camp? I just don't see it as reasonable. I don't think it's reasonable to ask code enforcement or our police officers to pull out a map and try to figure out, okay, can they camp here, can they not camp here? And the other big concern I have is that in the proposal, at least the map that we were provided, all the schools are included in the places where camping would be allowed. And for just a variety of reasons, I just don't think this is, I don't think this is the way to, to solve it. I, I appreciate the effort because, you know, with the situation we're in isn't good, but I'm not sure that this is, makes it better.
Councilor Nanki?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, if you look at those pink or red pieces on the map, depending on how colorblind you are, the, they could essentially camp around the prison or in Mill Creek Corporate Center. Actually, the entire right-hand wing of Ward 3 is red or on the, the tarmac at the airport, for that matter. So that map is somewhat, I can, I can see where staff was going with that as far as what its actual zoning is, but the probability that it would happen there is, is slim to none.
It's what the motion says.
Right. So essentially what it comes down to is, prior to us doing something, as long as people were being discreet and, and trying to be unobserved, we weren't doing it, because we're not out there tracking people down. And they could-
I'm, I'm trying to get his attention, Mr.-
They're looking for large camps that are actually creating some, some negative impacts, but the downtown people aren't gonna move to, to one of these pink places on the map either, because they could act, and I see them here and there, and they're still there for extended periods, out off the fringes. And I've had people email me that they're still out off Cascade's Gateway, but they're just a little further off into the brush and other places as well. So ban or no ban?
Yeah.
Are we gonna move them to someplace where, the more we tighten it, the more it'll get messed up? And I think we're seeing that versus had we done nothing originally, save for trying to get rid of a big camp in the middle of downtown, we just moved them onto the sidewalk now and they're camping under the awnings, so.
Yeah, not all of them. Chief, could you talk a little bit about the discreet camping concept? I mean, this idea that somehow the camping ban has absolutely forced people onto the street? I wanna kinda understand what's going on out there in reality. How are you all enforcing the existing camping in some of the parts of town? And do you know what I mean?
I do, Mayor. Jerry Moore, Chief of Police. I would say we are probably taking more of a complaint-driven approach to camping. We've tried to make sure in the, probably the, the most obvious or visible places that we try and take action and have taken action against camping and structures in the downtown area, in residential areas, probably almost everywhere. I'm going to guess many people have gone to, back to the parks. And of course, that isn't necessarily a healthy situation for our parks, but we are not going out seeking camps in the parks as aggressively, for lack of a better term, that we would in the downtown area.
So if one of these people parked at Rite Aid, wanted to take their tent out to one of the parks in a discreet location, you're, you're probably not gonna run into them, are ya? I'm not saying invite them out, but I mean, really. Because that number keeps shrinking. They're going somewhere.
Right, that's possible.
Yeah, I would kind of guess it is. What would you recommend we do to fix that downtown, Chief?
Well, I've...
You've made a recommendation.
Honestly, I've been here several times talking about camping property in Sittli, and that would be my recommendation. If Sittli existed, they wouldn't be where they are today. But I understand they feel that's where they need to be. But that would be my recommendation.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much, Chief. Does anyone else have a question for the chief? I don't wanna just take all this time. Counselor Lewis?
There's, I think there's gonna be a substitute motion at the end of this. But let me get there. I appreciate the zoning map that the city provided. But to look at all this pink space and say, "You can camp anywhere here," it just defies common sense. From a point of view of a West Salem resident, we've spent a great deal of time and years into developing the Edgewater District. And it would appear by this map that we could have campers along the greenway that butts Edgewater Street. That's not acceptable. There are two issues that I see that are most important. One is that we have been talking about, to fill in the blank, we need a low-barrier shelter. And I think that that's, at least that's where I wanna focus, is creating a place where you could call it low barrier. Any low-barrier shelter, you're taking your chances. Rather than have an entire city marked in pink, I would recommend that the staff go back to the drawing board. And quite frankly, and I do have a great deal of respect for the staff, but sometimes I get the sense that they work only internally. We have commercial realtors in this city that have been here since birth. They know the city very well. I believe that they would be willing to help identify a spot or two that we could create a low-barrier shelter. Not building or buying or renting a building, but whether it be what you call a barrack or the large tents that we heard about earlier. If you've ever gone into an area that's had a hurricane in Florida, you'll see that FEMA comes in with large tents. Those could be equipped with porta-potties, places for cleaning up, assuming that there's water. But identifying one or two, maybe even three spots, where we could have low-barrier camping because it wouldn't be a building. I believe that that's the way to go. Secondly, and along with that, to make it happen, the only way we're gonna make it happen is to pass the Sittli ordinance in downtown Salem. And I believe that we should do both things. The barrier shelter first, but recognizing that when we do have places for people to go, that we can then say, "You can't be here." Last comment. All debate with anyone who implies that having a human being live on the sidewalks in downtown Salem is the best we can do. And I don't believe that I wanna protect that anymore. I wanna do better. And having people live on the sidewalks is the worst possible option. I'm talking about an interim option that could bring them some kind of shelter and support as well as supporting the downtown merchants with the Sittli ordinance.
Now, did you make a motion out of that?
I seconded it just now.
Yeah, I'll go with it. He's gonna second it.
So we've got a substitute motion.
Can you clearly state your motion?
He didn't make a motion.
I think what he said, I...
I will make a motion.
Staff get a recommendation for a low-barrier shelter location, including tent, possible tent camps, and a Sittli ordinance in downtown. Isn't that what you said?
Correct.
Okay. Hoy?
I have a question for the city manager, not related to that.
Okay, well, let's see. Okay, well, go ahead. We'll just say it's part of debate. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. City Manager, can you update us on where we are at with the low-barrier shelter potential acquisition? Like, are we getting close? Are we, we don't know? Can you give us an update?
The city and the Community Action Agency are very aggressively pursuing state funding to assist with adding shelter capacity to Salem. Beyond that, I would be speculating, because I do not know what outcome there will be from the legislature. The Speaker of the House has introduced a bill that would provide funding for adding shelter capacity. City Council's Legislative Committee has identified as a priority for this short session, a low-barrier shelter and navigation center, two separate additions to our community's system of providing services to individuals who are unsheltered. The short session will end in 30 days? Three weeks? So we'll have a better idea certainly by then whether we were successful in our efforts to have state assistance with adding capacity.
I think on top of that, Counselor, it's really important. We heard some people testify absolutely inaccurately that the city's doing nothing. That's just nonsense. We have enough shelter for the people on the streets now in terms of emergency opportunities. And in addition, we have a variety of other opportunities for folks to move into. The problem is no Sittli ordinance to clear those streets. That really is the problem here. So, but we will have either, I think, before it's over, we'll have either a navigation center with some additional housing, shelter space, or a low-barrier shelter. I don't know if we can get both out of the legislature. Counselor Anderson?
Thank you. Following up on Counselor Hoy's question for the city manager. Without, I feel like I'm a member of the Senator-House Intelligence Committee. Without discussing exactly what we have talked about in an executive session, I guess I will ask you, if we were to get this money from the state, have we identified places that we could move to either purchase or lease as both a low-barrier shelter and as a navigation shelter? So in other words, if we get the money, we're ready to move on it, not then start looking for a place?
Between the work of our real estate staff and the work of our staff and community action staff with commercial brokers in the Salem area, we have identified viable buildings for both of the needs, the low-barrier shelter and a navigation center.
Thank you very much. Then I have a follow-up question for the city attorney. It relates to the Sittli. You know, my understanding of the Ninth Circuit case, the Boise case that controls what happens here in our community, is that... And I'm paraphrasing here because I'm not going into all the nuances. But what I think that that law says that, the case law says that unless you can show that you have spaces available for people who are either camping or sitting or doing something in the city proper, it's unconstitutional to ban them camping or ban them sitting in line.
Counselor Anderson, that's not exactly correct.
Good, because I want you to tell us what is correct.
In one respect, the Ninth Circuit decision dealt with criminal penalties.
Okay, I understand that.
The current camping ordinance is not a criminal penalty. So just on that fact alone, it doesn't apply.
Let's assume that it does apply because...
Even if it did apply, if you would let me.
Sure.
The idea that there has to be room at the end, so to speak, is not absolute. As far as camping goes, there is a single footnote in that entire decision that deals with camping with structures. It says you have to give them some modicum of ability to protect themselves against the elements. It doesn't say you can't prohibit camping. As far as a Sittli thing is respective, yeah, there is some language in there based on the previous decision, based on another decision out of California, and this exact decision that talks about having ability for them, have a place for them to go, essentially. There's also time, space, and manner restrictions. So the Sittli as proposed applied during the daytime, not during the nighttime. So it remains to be seen how a court would look at a daytime prohibition.
So it's your considered opinion that there, with respect to the restrictions that we have, were proposed in the Sittli ordinance, that our position, the city's position, is that it's not a criminal penalty and that the city's position is that it's only during the daylight hours. There is nothing in the Ninth Circuit Court, as its case, as it stands now, that would prohibit those two things.
The city's ordinance on sidewalk conduct was drafted well after the Boise decision, and it's written to be in compliance with it, and we believe that it is.
Okay, on both the issues that I talked about?
Yes.
Okay.
Counselor Norgai?
Sure, thank you. So, looking at this map with all this hot pink everywhere, this is a free-for-all. And I really appreciate the slideshow that was presented earlier because it has always been my preference that if we must have campers, because we don't have enough housing, because we don't have enough spaces indoors, that it should be in an area that everyone knows where it is, not just the homeless, so that they're not confused. So as one of my colleagues said, they don't need a map to try and figure out where they can and cannot be. It's hard enough already if you are struggling with disabilities, mental illness, and/or addiction, to figure out where you can be. But it's also better that way for homeless service providers. It's better for first responders. If everybody knows where you are, you are safer and you are more secure, and you are more likely to be connected with resources. So I don't support having this extremely large range of potential areas where people can camp because it's not clear to me, and I don't think it would be clear to many others. And as Counselor Hoy pointed out, I am not in favor of setting up camps next to schools, full stop. So as usual, I try to find whatever the most cost-effective and evidence-based approaches are. And so I turn to, after talking to a lot of experts on this issue, one of whom I asked, "What would happen if we were to lift a camping ban and designate a certain area? Would people even leave downtown?" And that individual indicated some would, but some would not. So if the intention of changing the camping ban is to make everyone magically disappear from Rite Aid and Nordstrom area, my understanding is that's not the case. And that was Jimmy Jones, who I spoke with. Would you be willing to speak a little bit more to that issue? Thank you.
Jimmy's testified on this as well a couple of times, has said the same, what you're saying, Counselor, would... Go ahead, Jimmy. You can get up and say the same thing over.
Yes, those were, good evening, everyone. Those were my words. At this point in time, after what we've seen for the last few months, I think if we did offer space for people to camp, whether it was organized or unorganized, you're not going to see all of those folks exit from the downtown. Most of the people that are there, we've went out a few times and did some surveys. And what we found is that we have a very, very low rate of warming shelter use among those particular individuals who remain. And so what you could expect would be a few folks to leave, but in many cases, quite a few would stay because of mobility issues, other physical health issues, mental health, and that sort of thing. So, you know, getting back to goals, what are the goals here? If your goals are to essentially get those individuals out of the downtown, I don't think necessarily that this is going to accomplish those goals. Thank you.
And so, Jimmy, does it make sense instead to focus more on permanent resources that will actually end homelessness as opposed to attempts to manage homelessness by shuffling them from street corner to street corner?
Well, I've long been a proponent of permanent housing solutions for this particular problem we have. As we've talked about many times before, a balance between ending homelessness and also providing managing solutions that are designed to prevent and limit human suffering that's associated with this particular condition. We have to keep a good balance between those things. But mostly, we need to be putting most of our resources into permanent solutions. And I think all of us know very, very well all of the things that the nonprofits and the city are doing to provide permanent housing solutions. The two items that were mentioned new tonight, a duration warming center. A lot of us are spending an awful lot of time trying to find resources to acquire that. And then a navigation center, which was called out in House Bill 4001, in particular for Salem, I think, could stand a great chance of helping move individuals into the new facilities we have coming online, like Fisher Road, and perhaps another 75-unit complex that all of us are sort of thinking back, in the back of our mind, that stands a good chance to get into Oregon Housing and Community Services, PSH Pilot Project, that should be made available again this spring.
Okay, good. Thanks, Jimmy.
Thank you.
Counselor Lewis?
You know, there's no question the effort that the city has put in over the last few years to deal with the homeless issue. And we've just heard again right now, all the things that are gonna be coming online, the sooner the better. You know, I've learned never to count any money from the state of Oregon until the session has closed, and the rules have been written. I'm talking about what we do today and for the next year or two. And I will not support people living on the sidewalks in downtown Salem until all of these other things are done. I don't believe that's fair to them, irregardless of their issues. I don't believe it's fair to the citizens of Salem. The downtown is our collective living room. I'm not suggesting that we just push them out. I'm talking about finding a place that will at least increase their ability to survive better than sitting on the sidewalks. And yes, I do believe that irregardless of how many spaces we had, there would be people, for whatever reason, that would choose to sit on the sidewalk in downtown Salem. I can't allow that. As a father, I could not allow my children to do that. And so I believe that we need to do better. And I believe that the substitute motion is better than at least the status quo.
Counselor Anderson?
Thank you. I think there's a little confusion here about the short-term problem that is facing us right now and the long-term goals the council, everybody in the council shares of eliminating homelessness to the extent that we can. So I don't think it's an issue of, we don't need to look at what's in front of us right now. We need to spend all our time on long-term issues because I haven't heard anyone say, "Here's some other long-term solution that we need to look at." We're looking at every single long-term situation we can and solution we can. So it's not, if we focus on the short-term solutions, we're failing to focus on the long-term solutions. We focused on long-term solutions. It's just that they're long-term. They're not gonna happen until, well, the closest one would be the SRO, which would be end of March or now in May. I'm looking at Nicole. End of March or is it May now? End of May. So between now and, nothing, none of our wonderful long-term solutions are gonna happen until the end of May and even further. And it won't, you know, if the legislature gives us money, we won't have this stuff ready until next summer. So my, I'm looking at what's happening right now.
Counselor, do you agree, I'm listening to Jimmy again on the question of the downtown streets?
No, I...
There is, there appears to be no long-term, no short-term solution to that, given the way he has described the problem folks are gonna run into. And the question is, do we have enough shelter space now in the, really during the day, as well as... as well as hopefully we'd see them extend into the evening, to do a sit lie, to clear the downtown streets, to urge people, and I think it can be done humanely and appropriately, to help people find the appropriate housing, but it becomes a little more expressly stated, you've got to go get into these shelter units. They're there, they're not getting used. It doesn't say it has to be low-low shelter or anything else, but, and this is also just talking about daytime hours. I'm trying to understand if that's what you're saying, because that's the only way to take care of that short-term problem in total.
Well, a couple things, Mr. Mayor. The first matter is, with respect to long-term versus short-term, to me, the only way the sit lie is potential, setting aside the other, the second set of my issues, is if in fact we do have enough shelter spaces for the people who are there, and...
And we do.
Well, no, I'm not convinced that we do.
Well, then, do you need, what do you need, a census of shelter spaces available?
Well, I bet Mr. Jones...
Because the last one that was tried was 140, which was just...
Mayor, if I may, I think Nicole Uetz, our Salem Housing Authority Director, may have some information regarding shelter capacity. The Salem Housing Authority has been surveying weekly shelter capacity availability, and it is, it is tight, and it certainly depends on individuals, as many probably individuals that are unsheltered in the community, there are reasons why they are unsheltered. However, we are trying to bring an objective standard to this ongoing question of what is available and what isn't for individuals who are unsheltered. So Nicole, if you could please share with council your staff's findings?
Sure. I'm Nicole Uetz, I'm the Housing Administrator for Salem Housing Authority. We've been surveying the shelters, not only for our own staff's knowledge, but to just ensure that we have some place that we can send anybody that comes through the doors that may need immediate assistance. So when we initially started this, it was in the beginning part of January of this 2020, and we had found that at the week of January 8th, at Simoka, there were four beds available. Two of those were upper bunks at any given time, up to about five of the upper bunks. You need to keep in mind that the upper bunks are actually harder to fill, because it takes individuals that can actually access the top bunk, mobility-wise, in order to reach those top bunks. At the beginning of, week of January 8th, Safe Sleep had one available space open, and then they were full the rest of the time. They've continued to remain full all the way through until just this last week, when we surveyed them again. At the beginning of January, we had at UGM, they were first reporting 50 beds available and open. They then quickly dropped down to seven beds open, and then they've remained to mats only at this point. This week, this is the first week we've heard them say they're completely full and no beds available. Salvation Army, as earlier stated in testimony, they're struggling with staffing capacity. They may have additional beds, but they do not have the staffing capacity to help with those additional beds. We've heard much of the same that was already in testimony. Church of the Park, we've heard you've been completely at max capacity since the beginning of the warming, duration warming. So as you can see, that we actually, when we go out to do outreach in collaboration with the police department or problem-oriented policing, this is very important information for us to know if we have capability of getting somebody immediate assistance. And what we're finding is that it is quickly getting to capacity now, but we also find that individuals do not seek some of these shelters for very specific reasons of their own, as to why they may not enter one of these shelters.
Counselor Anderson?
Thank you. So it sounds, Nicole, like right now we have four plus one places available. UGM is now full, Salvation Army is full because of staffing reasons, Church at the Park is full. So I guess my real question is, how many homeless people were there at the PIT count, and how many beds are there available, less the four that are open right now? In other words, what's the total number of beds? X number of people in the PIT, X number of beds, or one-half number of beds of X number of beds? That's where the difference is. How many people are in the homeless community, and how many beds are there for those people?
I'm going to defer to Jimmy. Do you know the exact count on that off the top of your head?
The numbers aren't finalized yet, but in the last PIT count at the end of January, we counted more than 908, I believe, unsheltered individuals in the city of Salem, and then we counted around 315 individuals who were in shelter. So that's a total of about 1,215 out of, that's about two-thirds of what we estimate from our other metrics that we use. And from that, you know, generally a good PIT count will show up about, a really good PIT count will show up about 80% of what's there. I think we did a pretty decent job, given how much the scattering effect is taking place.
So, Mr. Jones, what I hear you to say, given the good job, let's say we did 90% of the PIT, so there's around 1,000 people who are unsheltered, and there are 315 more in shelter, or there are 315 shelter spaces available?
There are 315 more in shelter, and there's around 330 shelter spaces available.
So we've got, so we have 15 spaces available for 900 to 1,000 people?
So, yes, generally. So what we're answering here is two different questions. One is shelter utilization. We almost always have individual beds that are open at the shelters, right? And the other question is, how many individuals that are there unsheltered in the community?
Yeah.
And so what we have is, yes, there are room, there's room at the end, but there's also a huge number of people outside that don't use it at all.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I had a second part of that, Mr. Mayor, which relates to the issues that the city attorney and I have been discussing. I have no doubt from my many conversations with him on many subjects that we have an excellent city attorney. I have no doubt that he and his staff have crafted the best possible ordinance with respect to criminalization or no criminalization, and sit lie availability or no sit lie availability and hours. Having said all that, the crafting of that ordinance has yet to be tested. And when I hear that now, as I understand it, whether you come or not, we have 900-plus people, if every one of them said, one of them said, "I want to go to the shelter," you know, we're short by 870 beds in shelters. So, you know, that's sort of an intractable problem to me.
Well, that isn't going to be solved by our long-term strategy either.
No, no.
I mean, that's not...
I agree, I agree.
I mean, so at some point, when do you look at your downtown street and say, "It's time to clean this mess up," besides going in with hoses at $5,000 a block face, or whatever the heck we're paying?
Yeah.
I just don't know, Tom, I really don't.
So, I don't either, and...
Because this is not going to get resolved.
And I suspect that at, you know, I just don't know what would happen if there's a legal challenge, that's really what I'm saying.
Well, that's what we'd find out with the legal challenge.
Yeah, we would.
It's what you guys get paid for.
Yeah. So I would very much like to hear any thoughts of any other counsel we're looking at.
Well, I'm going to, I'm going to make a substitute motion that we pull back up the sit lie ocean, motion, sit lie ordinance that's been recommended by the chief and the police chief for consideration at our next council meeting. Second by Ninkie. I think this is the only way we're going to come to grips with the short-term downtown problem that's faced by the rest of this community, and I understand the issues we're talking about relative to the homeless. Sitting on a sidewalk in your own filth is not, is not a solution, and that's what we're letting go on down there. And I think pushing people towards shelter, encourage, if it does encourage people to go into a more dispersed camping opportunity, if we can, you know, that's, that's great. But ultimately, we have got to clean those downtown streets. This is ridiculous that we've allowed this to get to this point. And if you want to come up with a reasonable camping concept, present it. But this thing you gave us a motion to last time did not resolve it. It created all this pink space. This isn't the staff, this is the motion that you all voted for last time.
Well...
That's what created that map, Counselor.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, we didn't vote for a motion.
No, you voted to have the staff...
We voted to have the staff come back and present it to us.
And here it is. And here it is. Here's what you voted on.
So you're saying, you just said, "We voted for a motion to create pink space."
No, you voted...
"We voted for a motion for the council, for the staff to come back so we can consider it further." That's not the same thing as voting for the motion.
No, you voted for a motion that created that map. I warned you of it at your last time.
Well, so what?
You can argue with me all you want, Counselor, I know what the vote was.
Well, I disagree with you, and I...
I'm sure you do, I mean, you see the map.
So let me raise a point of order, we're not going to get anywhere on this discussion. The way I understand it, Counselor Lewis's substitute motion actually said reinstate sit lie, so that was his motion, and so your, your motion is really to postpone this to Counselor Lewis's motion till the next meeting.
No, Counselor Lewis wants to do a camping as well as sit lie. I just want to clean sit lie. And I'm just given, I just think the courtesy of giving people an opportunity to see what that looks like again, and you all to think about it is all I'm asking for. It's kind of like your map.
Yeah, it's kind of like I just asked for the courtesy for us to come back and look at things, and that's what we've done. So...
Counselor Kizer? Do you want to be registered, you want to talk?
Thank you, Will. I did not support the motion last meeting to consider eliminating the camping ban in certain areas, and I'm not going to support the motion that the mayor or Counselor Lewis made. And the reason why is because I think we need to pause and give this time outside of a council meeting. I feel like we're being very reactionary. And we haven't been afforded, I would say, the space even as a council to really discuss this, besides at council meetings when it's all reactionary and we have the public looking at us and everybody else, so and a lot of pressure, and, and I will just urge that again, as I did last meeting, that we, we pause and wait, because every time we do something like this, the next council meeting, we're going to get the same things going to happen. We're going to get an hour to an hour and a half of public testimony, largely from the same people we've just heard from. We're going to do exactly what we're doing now, and the vote's going to probably turn out the same. And I just, I feel like it's not a good use of our time. I don't know what the way forward is here to get at that. I don't know if it's convening, I know everyone hates this, is it convening a subcommittee that's going to meet in the next week to really hammer out something? Is it going to be just waiting while we work with the legislature in the short term to make sure that we can get our funding and really putting our efforts in lobbying towards that, that we know that's going to work and it's going to actually make a difference? I just am going to urge that we, we not do anything tonight.
Okay. Counselor Young?
First off, I was in support of having low-barrier shelters set up within the community, because we have people who are suffering. We did this when we passed the original camping ban. And we have people out there who are dealing with illness right now, who are getting, who are increasing their mental health issues, as well as their dignity. This isn't a game. It feels like we are playing ping-pong with people who are living out in the streets. Another thought for the sit lie, I don't agree with sit lie. We have, as has been mentioned several times already, we have over 1,000 people who are unsheltered. Yes, there is Safe Sleep, yes, there is Church at the Park. Most of the time, they're full now. Even though we increased Safe Sleep to now 19 people, I just talked to Anell a little while ago, and she mentioned it's full. I mean, they also need to have enough staff. If they don't have enough staff, as was mentioned by earlier Dave McCarron? Sarah, okay, thank you. And Mike Johnson, if they don't have enough staff at either location, they can't fulfill all the beds. So it's not as though that people aren't even trying to get there. Some are trying to get there, but they can't even get in the door because they don't have Yes, there's also UGM, there's Simoka, Salvation Army, but you got, there's also certain rules and certain restrictions in those places. And people who are houseless, some of them can't even get to those locations because there are certain rules and restrictions that they cannot follow. Again, that comes around with living on the streets for so long, although some of it has to do with mental issues. Some of them are on drugs, but not all of them are. Some of the individuals who came earlier today said that, you know, they, you know, they've lived on the streets, they worked full-time, they still have to send their kids to school. They're trying to make it. I mean, I've mentioned this before, and I'll mention it again, I mean, I'm seeing an increase in number of elderly people who are out in the streets. I'm sure they weren't always on the street. I'm always, usually when I'm driving down commercial heading home, I see an elderly woman pushing a cart, she's probably about 70 or 80 years old, pushing a cart in the middle of the night, around 9:00, 10:00 PM at night. I also see an elderly gentleman, usually over by Winko, throughout the day, pushing a cart, full, full on his cart. I've seen him fall, almost falling asleep, pushing that cart, because he cannot set up a campsite, or maybe he is trying to rest somewhere, but he's falling asleep, just holding onto the cart. I was in Oakland last week, for a week for other business, and when I was out there, I saw there were camps there. Certain areas that had set aside camps, that had toilets or porta-potties available, they also had trash bins available. And I also went to another area of downtown Oakland, there were a few individuals who were sleeping outside of a business, but as soon as that business opened, the individual usually got up, cleaned up their space, and moved on for a little bit. The fact of the matter is, we don't have enough shelter, and we, and saying that we do have enough shelter is a big lie. Second, even if we had enough shelter, it doesn't necessarily mean people are going to be willy-nilly going to walk into that space. Through some of the conversations I've had with people, some of them had been in shelters before, but they were harmed in those shelters. So they have other mental health issues too that are happening to them that's preventing them from even wanting to go to a shelter, because to them, that is the danger. They would rather be outside in the elements, because they're, they feel safer out in the elements than they do inside of a shelter location, because they were assaulted, they might have had their things stolen when they were in there. So that being said, I would be in support of low-barrier shelters being set around, but I do not agree with a sit and lie.
Counselor Hoy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree with several elements of what my colleagues, with Counsel Young and Counsel Kizer just said. The, when, the really, the thing that really resonated for me was this ping-pong that we've been doing, and I think, and we've all talked about it, we've all felt it, and it's certainly been true. And I think it's because we don't have an overall strategy that we're driving towards. I mean, we, we want, we all want to do what we think is best. Everybody wants to make things better for people. I think that's universal, regardless of where you vote on sit lie, regardless on where you vote on any of these things. We all want to make, we all want to make things better for people. We want to make things better for our city. But we don't have a strategy. It's been really clear, and I am not supportive of continuing the ping-pong. We need to develop an actual strategy that we're driving towards, and this, debating these various topics every meeting, and having a lot of staff time put into these various things, isn't getting us where we want to go. And I feel like we need to sit down and have some sort of strategy developed and just drive towards it, and I think everything else that we're just wasting a lot of time and energy.
Counselor Ninkie?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I think we do have a strategy, is try to increase the number of beds to the maximum number possible, and put in a low-barrier shelter and a navigation center. The issue that we seem to be going back and forth, well, not really going back and forth on, more than three times now, is do we feel it's compassionate to let people live in their filth on the city streets, and if you just 100% don't like sit lie, and there's people who will never go to a shelter, and they will stay on those city streets, do we leave them there forever and just have all our businesses evacuate that area? just have all our businesses evacuate that area?
Good question. Yeah, councillor.
Hi. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So as someone who deals with conflict for a living, I'm really not surprised to see how tensions rise during these meetings. What I try to tell folks in my daily life is that crisis is an opportunity. It's an opportunity to tear down relationships and point fingers and erode carefully crafted pipelines. Or it's an opportunity to recognize that we have a crisis and that we need a coordinated approach. And I do believe it's not clear to the public that we have a coordinated approach. I've called for one in council meetings before. I do think that, as I understand it, there is consensus around getting a low barrier shelter. I haven't heard from any members of our council, our city staff, or frankly, any members of the public that I, that I heard earlier tonight that are opposed to a low barrier shelter. And we're going to the legislature in hopes of getting one. And the city manager did a good job of explaining, yes, that's what we're asking for, but obviously he doesn't have a crystal ball, we don't know what the legislature will do. I don't know if you noticed, they got a lot going on down there themselves. So what I really urge everyone is that any time that you get into these frustrating situations, try to take a deep breath, and try to focus on what the evidence will show. Now, sit lie, I believe poses constitutional issues. Lawyers disagree on the constitution all the time. I believe it is unconstitutional, and I believe we were on the verge, if we had passed sit lie, on getting an injunction, which means a judge says, stop. That means that basically even if you pass, the judge says, no, you don't. No, you don't. That's what they do. Plus, it could have been litigation that could have cost hundreds of thousands of dollars. Is that a good use of our city fund, even if we're proven right? No, it is not. But even if you don't want to hear a bunch of lawyers talk about whether it's constitutional or not, and I don't blame you, there's a larger question of would sit lie work? No, it would not work. Did a camping ban work? Did people just magically disappear? No. And we know with a sit lie ban, people will not disappear. We've heard from Jimmy Jones before. These folks are not new in town. They are residents here too, and many of them have been here 10 years, which may be longer than quite a number of folks. So sit lie will not work. It will merely scatter folks. Do we want folks scattered into our neighborhood and school areas? No. I'll answer that for you, no. So what I think we need to do, which is why I asked Mr. Jones come forward earlier today, is what makes the most sense? We have this much money for homelessness. This is how much we would realistically need to end homelessness. So what do we do with the little money we have? We spend it on what actually is proven to work. And that means supporting the low barrier shelter that's been discussed. And that means supporting the navigation center, because that can set folks up to accountability. If you want folks to change, you have to want them to change. They have to want to change themselves. And that means using things like a navigation center. It's not throwing money at the problem. Nobody wants to do that in here. We may disagree, but I don't believe anyone on council wants us to just throw money at a problem and go like this. So I think what we need to do is focus our money on where it is most likely to work. And that does mean on looking at longer-term solutions. And that does mean on going to the legislature and urging them, the time is now. One other comment I'll make, and I'll turn the floor over to my other colleagues. Councillor Leung is correct, and I so appreciate you pointing out the fact of the elderly. The seniors are the fastest-growing group of homeless right now. And the fact of the matter is, our homeless consist of several populations. And over and over again, I'm encountered by folks saying they don't want to work, they don't want help, they don't want shelter. Well, I think it depends on who you talk to. Does, if you talk to the kids at Taylor's House, do you think they're choosing to be homeless? Or the seniors on fixed income? Or the working families? When I talked to Family Promise in November of last year, I was brand-new on council, and Family Promise told me that they had turned away 74 families for the month of October. This notion that the homeless don't work and our sleepy, lazy, drug-addled criminals is a dangerous narrative that helps divide us. And so again, I urge us, let's find this coordinated approach, short-term, short-term solution, low barrier shelter, navigation center, emergency shelters face. Long-term, housing first. Long-term affordable housing. But let's try not to kill each other in the meantime. Let's try to find ways to continue to work together. Let's not fray these relationships, point fingers at our houses of worship, or at Arches, or at each other. This is what happens in crisis. Let's be better.
Thank you, councillor. I think that's really good advice. I appreciate your endorsement of the, the track we're on. I've spent several days at the legislature meeting on exactly the issues you're talking about, putting together the navigation center as well as the low barrier shelter. We have a series of long-term housing projects in the works, but unfortunately, the term keeps coming up as long-term, even a few months is considered long-term. The question I think still remains about the impact of what's happening on our downtown area. And what I don't hear is any other solution than sit lie. I still can't hear one, and I, I'm sorry, I can't. And even with camping, I keep still hear, we will have problems on these downtown streets. And I don't know, maybe you guys don't get the same contact I do. I know this group, and I hear from them each meeting, and I understand their point of view, and I think there's some really good stuff in what they're saying. But I also hear from business people, I hear from people who shop downtown, I hear from just general citizens who say, what are you doing to my town? And that one is that short-term problem. So I'm really interested, as we all get, you know, talking about the, the big issues, and we know, we know what works. It's housing first, it's the kind of programs we're involved in. What do we do about this short-term problem? And I don't hear a solution at all. I don't. Particularly when I find out that the solutions we talk about still keep our downtown streets in the current condition. Tom.
I, I, repeating again, that we all agree on the long-term solutions, and we all agree that this council has been moving toward it, both in our Salem goals and in the goals we have. That's not an issue. We don't have any problem with that. Our problem is, what do we do between now and the long-term solutions? And long-term could be beginning in May, but it's, we're facing something right now. So I, you know, I don't, I, I, I don't think we need, you know, calls to all, for us to all get together and work on long-term solutions. We've already done that. The, the issue is the short-term solutions. And as I understand it, the, the motion that is on the floor now is to have the staff come back with just a sit lie? That's your substitute motion, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, it's the sit lie. We've seen it before. It's the one that the chief and manager brought us.
Okay. So is that your motion?
Yeah.
Okay.
Call for the question. Okay, all those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed?
No.
Okay, ayes.
Wait a second. Are we, are we voting on the call of the question?
No, we're moving to the call question.
No, no, no.
No, 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 you're not.
The mayor's, you're voting on the mayor's substitute motion to bring back sit lie at a future meeting.
Which, just like my motion about bringing this back, at this motion, it doesn't mean we're going to vote for sit lie, it just means it's going to be in front of the council. We're not endorsing sit lie, we're endorsing the council, the staff to come back with a discussion and recommendation.
Yep. Same ideas you have.
Right, I can support that motion, and I don't know how I feel about, well, I do sort of know how I feel about sit lie, but we ought to discuss it some more.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion say aye. Aye. All opposed?
Nay.
Nay's up. Motion passes. Okay, we'll have this at the next meeting. Councillor Lewis?
If I'm not mistaken, I think the next thing would be a vote on the substitute motion that I proposed.
No, I substitute, I out-substitute again. It's my plan. So let's move on to information reports. Any, anything on information reports? Yes, councillor Anderson?
Item 6A. That's, I think, Director Fernandez. A couple questions. Peter, based on attachment two. As I'm reading that right, on the lower right-hand corner is the parking that is, the right-hand side of that parking there is the parking that's currently there, and the left half of that would be added parking?
That is correct.
Okay. Then I'm looking also at attachment number five, which is the bathroom area. It looks to me, like you said, there were eight unisex bathrooms, and it looks to me like each one of the bathrooms has a separate door to outside.
That is correct.
So you don't walk in and have eight stalls, you have eight separate stalls with eight separate doors to the outside.
Right, I believe it's similar to the bathrooms that we have by the carousel.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay.
That was easy.
Well, if, if.
I kind of missed that one, I'm sorry.
If I may, under, under six B, I know there were some questions that came in specific to a, a recent enforcement case, and I believe Director Fernandez is prepared this evening to give a verbal update. And also, we have the opportunity to introduce to council the city's new urban forester.
Yay. That is correct. He picked a great night to be here to, to be introduced. He's been sitting here patiently. I'd like to ask Mylan Davis to come up and just introduce himself real quickly and tell us just a little bit about himself.
Mr. Mayor, council. First, I'd like to thank Peter and his staff for allowing me to come to Salem to be the new urban forester. I'm going to hand out my card. Do you guys, if you have any questions?
Where are you from?
Feel free to, I'm coming from Alabama directly. Before that, I worked in the District of Columbia for 10 years in the municipality there, for the Department of Transportation as an urban forester. Worked for a number of years in Virginia, doing some similar work.
Are you an arborist?
Yes.
Excellent.
Yep. Thank you. Thanks.
I don't know, any other questions of the urban forester?
I don't think his family's here yet, so he's looking for dinner opportunities.
Dinner and housing opportunities too, so.
Well, it's really good to have you here. Really glad you're here.
Very happy to be here.
You bet.
We also have staff available to highlight the three reports as well, if that's of interest to council.
So, so with respect to, thank you, Mr. City Manager, there have been some questions about how we are enforcing, when there's a situation where public trees are cut or, or pruned without a permit. There was unfortunately a lot of misunderstandings, given the original report from the State Smith Journal that said that we were not enforcing the gaddy trees, which was incorrect because in fact, we were developing the, the fine for the gaddy trees. So we have been applying chapter 85, 86030 diligently. We've had 12 enforcement actions over the last five years, and all those enforcement actions have actually been paid. We had one last summer that councillor Leung had, had inquired about over in front of Abaneros, where that property owner had actually appealed to the hearings officer, as is their right, and he lost the appeal, so he had to pay the fine. Unfortunately, what I have to report to you is that we have not been doing a very good job of applying 86105C, which is the requirement that not only do you get fined, but you must also plant new trees. And in that part, given the change in, in forester, the, the changes in, in how we do the, the enforcement, none of the 12 actions that we've taken, folks have done the replanting as they're supposed to. They were sent letters, they're supposed to follow up, they have not, and we have not done a good job of now following up with them to make sure that they were doing that. We are going to do that. We are also struggling with what exactly we meant, since we proposed the, the ordinance to council on what an appraisal acceptable to the director means. Appraisals for trees can run into the tens of thousands of dollars. We never represented to council that people would be hit up for that kind of money, so we need to consider that. And if in fact, that's where we land, we're going to need to come back to council to, to have that discussion. So we're working on that, we're working on, on redoing our, our administrative rules. We intend to notify all 12 property owners that they still owe us a replanting plan, so we intend to fully bring all that into compliance, but we have not done a good job of doing that.
Yes?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I raised this issue specifically, the issue of the gaddy trees, which is in my neighborhood and in my ward, and has caused quite a bit of consternation and back and forth. And the city manager told me we would have a oral report today, followed by a written report, and I would very much appreciate a written report because there are just a whole lot of questions here about the enforcement, about, and I'm really looking at ironically in, in our tree canopy report, which is a very good report, but I, I, I look at the goals. Goal number one is to protect, increase, and enhance the tree canopy. Yes, we did that overall, but we didn't do it at, in this, the trees we're talking about now, on the, the street trees on the south end of Liberty and Commercial where they meet. Goal number two is increased education and outreach about tree benefits. I don't think we've done that because it's clear that the owners of the, not the owners, the people whose property abutted these trees just took them down. So how do we educate them? And goal number four, improved city coordination, communications, and codes related to trees. We haven't met that goal on this. So I would be very, very much interested in a detailed report from Public Works about the specific situation, I'll just call them the gaddy street trees, and then what we intend to do in the future, including what we learned from this situation, and whether or not the, the situation with the gaddy street trees, it's hard to say, is a closed situation, and if so, you know, how are we going to deal with these situations in the future, and what have we learned from the way we handled it? And I'm, I'm also concerned there seems to be, as Director Fernandez says, some confusion between various parts of the city code, and I'd like to have that issue responded to too.
Tom, are you, are you kind of thinking of a work session, or do you have a?
Well, I'd like to see, I'd like to see the report first, and then, then if we think a work session, it is appropriate, it might be.
Okay. Councillor Leung?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I'm actually, would be in favor of a work session in particular, but I have a follow-up question. In the report that you're planning on sending to council, Director Fernandez, are you also going to be including any recommendations? For example, you mentioned there was 12 owners who have not followed through and replanted trees. So for those individuals, you had sent out a reminder letter to them, but they still have not done it, and some of them have been released almost a year, maybe longer, depending on the individuals. Is there any fine or sanctions that are going to be recommended or in place if they keep ignoring those letters?
Yeah, so councillor, I just want to be clear, we have not sent a reminder letter, and that's our failure. They did get the penalty, they did get the letter saying that they had to reach out to Parks Operations to do a replanting plan, and that's what has not been done. So we do intend to follow up with those owners, with those property owners to say, hey, you still owe us this. The question then becomes, what do they owe us? And, you know, how much replanting needs to be done? And that is, that is the additional question that, that we're, that we have to work on and we have not worked on. And part of it is the, we've had a change in urban forester, we're delighted to have Mr. Davis with us so that he can help us. help us and bring that expertise forward. We may need a code change. We will definitely need an administrative rule change. So that's the kind of stuff that we'll work on. We want to get you the report, I believe, in March, and then at some future date. I would advise to not have the work session in March as we work on it, but once we have a solution to the, to the issue, then we would definitely want to propose that to the council and then see where we go.
Do you have the authority to file liens, and do you?
We could.
But you don't right now?
Well, we haven't hit anybody up for more than a couple thousand dollars.
No, I, let me just give you my short, very short version of a lien. I had a, I forgot to pay a ticket in Eugene one time. And I went to closing on a piece of property and was told I could not close until I sent that 50 bucks to Eugene, because, so I just, apparently Eugene has some sort of system they're willing to chase you down, and it worked. It worked really well. And I hope you will look at that kind of activity, that somebody is not paying us for over a year on that clear violation. Seems odd.
Yeah, and I want to be clear. They have paid the fine. What, they have not followed up, they've paid the fine. It is the second part, which is they have to enter into an agreement with us to replant.
Okay.
And they have all seemed to have forgotten that they needed to call the Parks Operations. And we have not followed up to remind them. So that's, that's the piece, that's the piece that's missing.
I get it. I'm sorry. I came in at the back end of that.
Couple of comments. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm very interested in hearing the development on these new, on the evaluation of our ordinances. I would encourage you to include council in some of the, as you're developing those. I think that, and potentially maybe interested parties other than just, so we're not just creating these things in a vacuum. The other thing I'm interested in is the goals from the tree report. I'm very disappointed in the progress or lack of progress in East and North Salem. I really want to see some strategies where we, although we've made a good overall progress, we have made almost no progress in my, in my ward. And I would like to see some specific strategies to really help, because we know that trees are so important to health outcomes and other things. We've really, I really want to see some focused goals and strategies on how we're going to sort of make this a more equal process across the city and not just focused in certain areas. So I would be hopeful that that's included as we go forward.
Yeah, we can have that conversation, Counselor. We, too, are concerned. We're spending a lot of money to plant trees. What I understand from my staff, and we can, I see the lateness of the hour, but Patricia's been sitting here as well. To really enhance canopy, we may need to enter into programs where we encourage private property owners to plant. That is a different tack than what we're doing right now, which is buying trees and planting them either in rights-of-way or in publicly-owned properties. But we can certainly add that to the report and talk about the difficulties in certain, in certain parts of the city. But, but we are spending our money every year, and we intend to continue to spend it, you know, ad infinitum.
Yeah, and I appreciate that. I would, I would be very interested in looking at a public-private partnership of some sort, where we, maybe the city buys the tree, and we're able to plant on private property. I don't know what that would look like, but something where we get a little bit more creative, especially in those areas of the city where our canopy is so low.
Right. Agreed. Thank you.
Counselor?
Hi. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So one of the, one of the impacts, one of the ripple effects of us spending so much time on homelessness is that we were barely able to spend any time with this very important report. If you take a look at, for example, facts and findings, Salem's trees provide $80 million in total annual benefits. 80 million. That includes air quality, stormwater, and carbon sequestration. If you take a look at the goals that my colleague, Counselor Anderson, mentioned, many of the goals have to do with education, outreach, developing support with the public, improving communication, developing and implementing a community forestry management plan. It strikes me that it's high time that we work more with our citizens to create an urban forest commission, or something to that effect, because, listen, I'm not a tree expert. And there are a lot of folks out there that have a great deal of interest in monitoring our tree canopy, who have identified the fact that we still have heat islands in our lower-income neighborhoods, that we can set even higher and better goals of even more tree canopy. And it seems to me that there's a great deal of expertise that this requires. And we, as counselors, are not urban foresters. So I think I would like to see our council consider, especially when we have more time on another night, talking about creating an urban forest commission to work specifically on tree-specific policies, plans, and regulations, and to refer that back to us. Because with everything else that we have going on right now, I do not see our own ability of city councilors to figure all this out. The only final note I would be is that ordinances should be enforced. Period. So if people are violating the ordinances and not being fined appropriately, I think that's a concern. And I will look forward to reading what the report has to say on that.
Thank you very much. Counselor Anderson?
Mr. Mayor, first of all, Mr. Fernandez, I'd like a discussion of the various chapters in 86, 100, 105, 125, and how you interpret them. I also move that we hold a work session on, on the
Oops. I need a 10-minute extension before you do.
Okay. I thought I had two minutes. Okay.
I'm sorry.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. Okay, I move a 10-minute extension. I thought I could get it in.
Unless you want Mr. Barron to just go home and not, as you told.
Yeah. I move a 10-minute extension.
Who's my second?
Second.
Okay, you got a second? All those in favor, say aye. 10 minutes?
Aye.
Okay.
Nay.
Yeah, okay.
That's worth a nay.
There aren't enough. Okay.
So I think, I think we ought to have a work session. And, you know, we tried to get a tree commission before, and that was defeated, and it went to sprab. So I don't know if, the chances of doing that again. But I think we need a work session on the tree report and the general discussion of how we deal with violations of the code. And I would have to say, there are many, many good things in this report. The staff is to be commended for, but I agree with Counselor Nordite, there are many things we need to discuss in detail.
Very good. Thank you.
So I made the motion. I don't think anybody's going to second it.
You're all set. And I'm sure if you have more you want to share with Mr. Fernandez in advance.
For a work session on the, on the tree.
He's got, he's got an email box that'll, that still isn't full.
I would second your motion.
Yeah. For a work session on the tree.
Over your work session, sure. All those in favor of a work session, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Okay. Anything else on information reports?
That's after we receive the report, correct? Like the work session?
You've got it.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, everybody, okay, we'll do the first reading, or second reading.
Only a second reading, and Vanessa needs to be ready.
You're first.
Okay, ordinance bill number 420, an ordinance relating to the authorization of revenue bonds. Counselor Nordite?
Counselor Nordite, you're up first.
Aye.
Counselor Lewis?
Aye.
Counselor Kizer?
Aye.
Counselor Anderson?
Aye.
Counselor Ninkie?
Aye.
Counselor Leung?
Aye.
Counselor Osid?
Aye.
Counselor Hoy?
Aye.
And Mayor Bennett?
Aye. Okay. She passes. And we are adjourned.